...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
President.
Supervisor Horstley.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier is absent. President Slocum.
Here. And she'll join us in a few minutes. Yeah.
So now we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for persons wishing to address the Board on county-related matters that are not otherwise on this agenda, as well as items that are listed on the consent agenda. Speakers will be provided two minutes, and an extension can be provided at the discretion of the Board President. First, we have Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the Board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Malp B., and County Council, Mr. Byers. Thank all of you for your service to the county and authorizing assisted outpatient treatment known as LoR's Law. Please waive all of the civil and criminal immunities that the Landman-Petra Short Act provides to those who decide to stop or deny treatment to persons living with serious mental illness that do not meet LoR's Law multiple hospitalization or incarceration or incidence of violence criteria. LoR's Law is a more compassionate response to those who live with serious mental illness complicated by an inability to understand their need for treatment, as well as those affected by the consequences of their behavior, including their families. Then the intellectually and morally bankrupt Landman-Petra Short Act. LoR's Law, however, is still indicative of California's reactive first-fail system of treating those living with serious mental illness, because the person living with serious mental illness must demonstrate a failure to live safely in the community in order to receive services under LoR's Law. Using multiple hospitalizations or incarceration or an act of violence as an eligibility criteria ensures mental health treatment failures will take place. Please help end the intellectually and morally bankrupt Landman-Petra Short Act practices that endanger everyone's health and safety. By waiving all of the civil and criminal immunities, the Landman-Petra Short Act provides to those who decide to discontinue or deny treatment to persons living with serious mental illness and are not eligible for participation in LoR's Law services. Thank you.
Next, we have Gina Vandelos, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Hi. This is a first for me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you today. I live in the community on the east side of San Carlos, east of El Camino, and there has been an unprecedented increase of noise from the San Carlos Airport. Just a few weekends ago, actually just one of those beautiful fall days, my daughter was home to celebrate her birthday, and we had lunch planned backyard, in the backyard. But with all the noise from the planes and helicopters, our conversation was constantly being interrupted. This happens all the time, and it's unacceptable. I understand that the San Mateo County Board approved Surf Air in San Carlos. Who voted for this? The entire peninsula is up in arms now that Surf Air flies in and out of the San Carlos Airport. Our neighborhood constantly hears these planes. Surf Air planes are noisy propeller planes that often are louder than the jets flying out of SFO. These planes should be banned from operating out of the San Carlos Airport. But here's a fact that is very, very alarming to me. The San Carlos Airport was measured as having twice the allowable lead admissions. So of all the airports in the state of California, San Carlos Airport has the worst lead admissions in the state by a large margin. It's very alarming. Who is looking out for the children in our community that may be getting lead poisoning? This needs to be addressed. Additionally, the county needs to stop taking funds from FAA so that we have leverage in negotiating with them. This Board has let the citizens of San Carlos down, and what are you going to do to help us out, help this problem? Thank you.
Next, we have Lenny Roberts, followed by Reina Lehman.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'm Lenny Roberts, and I'm speaking today for the Save Our Coast Committee. This week marks the 30th anniversary of the passage of Measure A, the Coastal Protection Initiative, which was sponsored by the Save Our Coast Committee and many others. Measure A was the first ever countywide citizens initiative. People were very worried at the time about the upcoming federal lease sale, number 119, which would allow offshore, which would have leased our offshore area for oil drilling off the San Mateo Coast. And there are also indications that the Board of Supervisors at that time was going to be willing to loosen restrictions on our coastal plan, which protects the rural farmlands. So, the Save Our Coast Committee got busy, drafted an initiative, gathered 33,313 signatures to place Measure A on the ballot, and on November 4th, 1986, the voters approved Measure A by a whopping 64% yes vote. And six years later, when a developer-sponsored initiative was put on the ballot that would have exempted the 862-acre Cassineli Ranch just outside of Half Moon Bay from Measure A, the voters delivered an unprecedented smackdown. They defeated Measure D by an 82% no vote, despite them spending $600,000 to try to pass the measure. So the political message became very clear: Don't mess with the San Mateo Coast. I thought it was important to take a moment today and recognize Measure A, and also to thank you, President Slocum, and each member of the Board of Supervisors, as well as County Manager John Malp B., and County Council John Byers, and Community Development Director Steve Monowitz, for your continuing commitment to maintaining the existing protections of Measure A. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Reina Lehman, speaking on Consent Item Number 13.
Good morning. On behalf of low-income workers and the Raise the Ways Coalition, I stand as a witness to history this morning and look forward to working with the Board on implementing, monitoring, and proactive enforcement of the living wage ordinance that you'll consider later today. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move now to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items. Just one thing, I would like to ask that item number two be pulled, and we'll hear that later, perhaps in January, if that's okay with everybody.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
And the regular agenda as well.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move to item number two, which is the presentation of the annual report. I'm sorry. Item number one, presentation of a proclamation designating November 20th, 2016, as transgender Day of Remembrance, and Supervisor Pine will lead this discussion. Thank you, President Slocum. Each year since 1998, jurisdictions around the country have honored those who've lost their lives as a result of anti-transgender violence. In our community, we've made so much great progress in the LGBTQ community, but we have to remember there's much work to be done, and it's a particular challenge for the transgender community. So it's appropriate today for us to honor those who most tragically have lost their lives due to extreme discrimination and violence, and to honor those who persevere in our community. So I do have a proclamation today, and I see a couple of the members of the LGBT community. So I see Stevie Jolie Stahlmeier and our, our, Anora Miller. So if I could present this to you, I'd be most honored. Did he make a motion?
Thank you, Supervisor Pine, and thank you distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors for all of your continued support of the transgender people of San Mateo County. Additionally, I'd like to thank you specifically for your support of Assembly Bill 1732, which just last month was signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown. This Assembly Bill established single-user restrooms as non-gendered for both public and business spaces throughout the state of California. I want to mention, well in advance, this law being passed, our own county health department had moved to make all of the single-use toilet facilities non-gender specific. Louise Rogers, thank you very much, if you're out there. Appreciate your help regarding this. We hope that many of you will join us at our event on November 17th at the San Mateo Congregational Church between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. to learn more about what you can do to stop the terrible epidemic of violence and hate against trans people. This event is co-sponsored by the San Mateo County Pride Initiative and the LGBTQ Commission. Rather than going into all of the details of what happens to transgender people throughout the world, actually, please come to our event and learn firsthand what you can do to help. Thank you again.
I don't remember doing a motion for item number one. Do we need to do a motion? Thank you. I'll move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Pine. Move to the nine o'clock item, which is Department Performance Reports. As you know, last meeting, this meeting, and the next meeting, I think, we're doing performance review reports by department heads. And first up this morning is Sandy Arnott, the Treasurer-Tax Collector.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the Board, Mr. Malp B., Mr. Byers. Here to present the report for the Treasurer-Tax Collector's Office. Our mission statement is as it appears here. I won't spend any more time on that one. On this slide, the increase in our county pool dollar earnings is due to the growth in the size of the pool from increased tax collections, new school general obligation bonds, and the jail bond. Our target collection of 1.9 billion for all tax rules increased to 2.3 billion due to increased property evaluations. Of our 14 performance goals, 12 were successfully met, and we did still yield an 86% rate exceeding our target of 80%. We surpassed our target of 85% on employee evaluations completed annually by including employee evaluations as part of the performance standards to be met by each supervisor and manager, including implementing one-on-one meetings with staff at least quarterly. I anticipate an increase in this area for 2016-17. Our goal of 79.2% on this measure was not met. Employees voice their concern over housing costs, longer commutes, traffic congestion, and pay not up to par with the cost of living in this county. Some employees have signed up for the commuter bus program and have stated their appreciation for the relief in dealing with the daily driving stressors. Our goal of 95% on this measure was not met. Our customers expressed dissatisfaction with parking, wait time for service, and debt collection efforts during poor economic times. To alleviate the parking issue, we will have a manned mobile mailbox in the roundabout from December 6th to 12th so people can drive by and drop off their tax payment instead of parking to do so. Lengthy wait times were a result of two staff on maternity leave and turnover in the cashiering area. Both staff members have now returned, and we are conducting a recruitment for replacement staff. Revenue Services staff have been working with customers to develop payment plans to assist them in meeting their financial obligations. Our cost per capita has been lower than the target amount due to efficient and effective processes within the office, such as reducing overall costs and streamlining banking and payment processes by using lockbox services and implementing e-bill. I will address a few of our highlights. The second bullet point regarding our investment pool gross earnings, I just wanted to advise you that we have surpassed our benchmark, which is the state's local agency investment fund, otherwise known as LAIF, which earned not quite half a percent. Regarding the third bullet point, deposits increased from last year's amount of 52,080 due to increased deposits by the parks, planning, and the hospital. Fourth bullet, the admin fee is based on the size of the pool and our budget requirements. It was lowered because 10 and 1/2 basis points of the size of our pool generated an amount On the first bullet point of this slide, I'd like to recognize the Revenue Services staff who have worked extremely hard to achieve these numbers. I want to make sure I'm on the right slide here. Okay, here we go. I'd like to recognize the Revenue Services staff who worked extremely hard to achieve these numbers. Results for 2016-17 may be negatively impacted as that office is dealing with employee turnover, disabilities, and maternity leave. On the third bullet point, our retreat was a mix of generations of employees from all three divisions. It included manager and supervisor presentations, success stories from long-term service employees, award ceremonies, employee engagement initiatives, and team-building exercises. Am I on the wrong one? No, who's there? All well received. A monthly department newsletter was developed to improve communications. We anticipate holding another retreat next June, then every other year after that. Regarding this first bullet point under our goals, implementation of a new property tax system contributes to the shared vision 2025 of collaborative community by approaching issues with fiscal accountability and concerns for future impacts. To date, we have set aside $5.4 million towards a new system. The current legacy system cannot provide the ability to offer improved tax payment options to our customers. It is imperative that we move to another system that can grow with advancing technological capabilities. Our taxpayers want and deserve more options. The third bullet point, we have been using lockbox services on secure tax payments for the past four years successfully with cost savings. Having supplemental taxes processed through lockbox will eliminate manual in-house processing by staff, allowing them to focus on customer service needs. Where'd I go? Under challenges, as I stated earlier, our Revenue Services staff continues to work with our customers to set up payment plans to help them meet their financial obligations. We have explored options for a new property tax system and feel we have found a system that would meet our needs with technological growth capability. We are currently working with the County Manager's Office to hopefully secure financing for the system. A classification study is currently underway for our cashiering area. We are hopeful that a more appropriate title and pay will improve our retention of employees in this area. Uh-oh. Okay. I'm not very good with this clicker, obviously.
We'll have to give you clicker training.
As you see a picture of my staff, I wish to thank each and every one of them for their hard work and dedication to the job they perform. Our department would not be successful without them. Special thanks to management analyst Tiffany Tway for her hard work on this budget. I also wish to thank this Board, County Manager's Office, especially Rolando Horketa, for their ongoing support. And at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll put the clicker down before I do something else.
Thank you, Mrs. Arnott, for the presentation. Questions, comments? I, yeah, looks, thank you for the report.
Okay.
I just had one quick question.
Sure.
And this is coming from memory, so if I'm wrong, please forgive me. But I'm wondering about the status of credit card uses, usage in departments. Are, are most departments who charge fees taking credit cards now? Able to take credit cards or not?
Well, pretty much any department is, is able to take credit cards if, if they want to. I mean, we're still working on centralized cashiering so that each department or various departments aren't handling those, that they can go through the Treasurer's Office. But currently, if a department wants to handle credit card services for their customers, they're welcome to do so. People still do complain about the fee. I know within the Tax Collector's Office, more and more people are doing online tax payments, and they're not really using credit cards, they're just transferring funds. So the amount of credit card uses has decreased, and that's not a good thing, because fees go down if credit card usage goes up. So that's kind of a negative against that. But sure, any department who wants to get on credit card services for their customers just need to contact us, and we'll set that up for them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Tissier.
Just a quick question. Under your challenges, you talk about retention of fiscal office specialists and cashiers. Have you done any survey to see what other counties pay in those types of positions?
We have. It's, it's pretty much what's happening is that it's a fiscal office specialist position. People come in expecting to just do a certain thing. In, in that particular department, as you know, when we took on Revenue Services, there was a requirement for those particular individuals to learn a completely different system over and above what we currently use in the office. And so they're, they're not only fiscal officers, they're also partly revenue collectors, which is not part of their title. It's very, very complex what they have to do, dealing with court clients and tax and treasury. There's so much involved there that we hire people that are very, very good people, but then when they see the amount of work and the complexity of what they have to do and realize that in another department, they don't have to work so hard. We have most people doing lateral transfers out of the department, so we're having a problem retaining them. So we are working with Revenue Services with regards to a title that works best so that we don't have people coming in and then just kind of going out into another FOS position. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that something positive will come out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Pine, no? All right. Thank you for that report.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Appreciate it. Next up, Human Resources. Donna Valencourt, Director.
Good morning, President Slocum, honorable members of the Board, Mr. Malp B., Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure to be here to present the HR Department Performance Report. So HR really facilitates the employees' journey at the county from beginning to end. To state simply, our mission is to maximize individual and organizational potential and to position San Mateo County as an employer of choice. So first, I'd like to talk about recruiting talent to our county. We understand the need to fill positions as quickly as possible. At the same time, we want to make sure we don't rush the process, so we maintain the level of quality of our candidates. We continue to maintain an average fill time that is below the ICMA average. This is not to say that we don't have hard-to-fill positions that we continuously leave open. Those are especially in the medical arena. We expect the market for talented workers will continue to be competitive, especially in this area with our low unemployment rates. Our employees, talented employees, have many options. In order to be attractive to that talent pool, we've been trying different recruitment strategies, as well as expanding existing programs and strategies. One of our successes has been the Management Fellowship Program, and here is one of our management fellows, Ivana, describing her experience here with the county.
My name is Ivana Andrade. I'm a management fellow here at the County of San Mateo. I'm working in the Office of Sustainability. I'm working on a couple of projects. The main one right now is the CLRI's program. It's called Sea Change SNC. My main role in, in that project is helping finish the county's vulnerability assessment and helping that program move into the next phase of work. The fellowship program is huge for me. I spent quite a long time looking for jobs out here in the Bay Area. I really struggled to find something that let me live and work my passion. It also turns out that being in this public service role has become, just in the short time that I've been here, a really important component of that work for me. That I didn't really foresee, but has been something that I am valuing more and more in this job.
So thanks to Ivana. Again, getting people in that are able to connect with that public service mission, very important for our future leadership. So onboarding is our kind of next phase of the employee life cycle, and that creates the first impression that new hires have of the county. So I want to share some of what we've been doing to improve that experience for our employees. To help new hires get adjusted more quickly and smoothly, we've revamped our onboarding process. And this effort was guided by the input of a countywide committee, and it resulted in new online resources with easy access to information to help our new employees get established and connected, connected early on. We also redesigned a more meaningful new employee welcome, and you see on the screen the results of those surveys of employees. This renewed focus on onboarding has resulted in greater clarity about what's expected of new employees during that, during that first few critical months. It's during this honeymoon phase that they either decide to stay with the county or to look and explore other opportunities. Our onboarding survey data, and this is where we've surveyed our new employees after six months, shows extremely positive feedback from our new hires. And the next phase, once we've brought them onboard, is to engage and retain them. As you know, employee engagement and retention is critical to the county's success. Our employees directly impact the quality of our programs and services. So unwanted and unintended turnover is not only costly, but it affects the morale of the existing remaining employees. So we remain focused on supporting and retaining a positive, motivated, and productive workforce. 79% of county employees would recommend the county as a great, not just good, but great place to work. And this compares very favorably across the nation. For public sector, it's about 55%, and for private sector, it's about 30%. In human resources, 94% of our employees rate their experiences working for the county as good or better. Countywide, our turnover rate is about 8%. It's remained constant over the last few years, and this compares with the benchmark from ICMA. As you can see, the majority of turnover, 62%, is resignation, and another 30% is from normal retirement. The numbers indicate that a significant percent of our workforce are eligible to retire. The higher retirement risk, we note as those that are 55 years or older and have at least 20 years of service. The largest number in this category, that 359, is really senior management, and this is why we continue to focus on succession management, including strategies to develop new leaders, which I'll discuss in a few minutes. With the Board and the County Managers' continued support, our county remains a leader in promoting wellness initiatives to the benefit of our employees. Our innovative wellness programs support our culture in caring for our employees. Some of the programs include WACadoo, Holiday Hold'em, wellness coaching, health coaching, and wellness dividends. The wellness efforts have not only contributed to the benefit and improvement of our employees' health and quality of life, they've resulted in significant cost savings for the county, our employees, and our taxpayers. Over the last seven years, our benefit increases have been lower than budgeted, lower than the, and lower than the Kaiser Blue Shield benchmarks. For example, our less than 2% increase for next year, 2017, represents more than a $5 million savings between the benchmarks of Blue Shield and Kaiser. Successfully developing employees is a necessity for our 21st century workforce. Not only is it necessary to keep up with technology and the changing needs of our customers and clients, our new employees expect that, that the county help them continue to learn and grow in their careers. Let me first share how we've been filling positions with internal versus external candidates. For management positions, a lot of factors need to be considered in deciding whether or not to build from within or to buy from the outside, and that And that includes skills and experience as well as cultural fit. We will continue to develop our internal talent to be ready to take on new responsibilities and challenges, and also remain open to attracting new talent with new ideas. We anticipate that sixty-five percent to thirty-five percent ratio will probably remain for the foreseeable future. So we are grateful to your Board and the county manager for continuing to be supportive of investment employee training over the years. When our employees are learning and growing, we're creating that leadership pipeline. Here's some of the current data from participants about the value of the training programs that they've received. We've been creating a diverse array of development opportunities for employees at all levels of the organization. We're so excited to launch the Executive Leadership Academy this year, the Management Development Program. We're part of a regional training program with twenty cities and special districts in, in the county, as well as part of a statewide or a countywide, a two-county state, I'm sorry, a two-county next generation committee. We're also involved in a state initiative, the same thing. But I want to just highlight really quickly, we conducted our first Career Development Day this past Thursday, which was born out of a Labor Management Committee, very successful effort. Over seven hundred of our employees signed up to attend this event at the Expo Center and hear about what hiring managers are looking for, top ten tips for landing a job, and to hear career stories from some of our leaders. This was truly like one of the best days of my tenure. It was just outstanding. And I want to thank Supervisor Slocum and County Manager Malp, who kicked it off, just providing compelling stories and support for our counties in terms of their development and their career mobility. So thank you for that. In this next section, I want to highlight some of our key performance indicators in human resources. We've continued to achieve a high level of satisfaction with our services. I'm proud of the significant effort and high quality of work of our staff and pleased that it's reflected in this customer feedback. This metric also speaks to our EEO and Employee Relations Staff's talent and ability and effectiveness in resolving complaints at the lowest levels. Our HR costs per employee compared to other agencies in the region is significantly lower. And we met eighty-six percent of our performance goal. We've had a steady increase since 2014, so we like that trend. Ninety-eight percent of our employees received their employee evaluations. Phew, we'd better be setting the example for that metric. And our workers' compensation claims per hundred employees compare favorably to the ICMA benchmark. Other highlights in the past cycle include technology improvements, process and program improvements, especially in risk management and purchasing, and strong collaboration, including the Agile. And also, I mentioned some of our Labor Management Committees, I mentioned Career Development. We also have just an extremely effective Labor Management Benefits Committee that has really been helpful to our efforts. We're very proud to have received recognition this past year for our programs. Received the Award of Excellence for our Agile Program from IPMA HR, which is kind of the premier international organization for human resources in the public sector. Rocio picked up the award this past September in Kansas City. We also received an award for our Deferred Compensation Plan Design from Nagda, and Lisa and Jay picked up that award also in September in Denver. Clearly, there are challenges across the spectrum of our responsibilities in HR. I just talked about a couple of them. Under recruitment, housing and transportation is front and center. But I'd like to take this opportunity to, again, thank your Board, the County Manager's Office, the Office of Sustainability, for the Employee Shuttle Program, which has done, gone a long way to reduce the stress of the commute for our employees. Another challenge to engage our employees is relating, related to managing the complex and changing employment laws, many that can be an impediment to the flexibility that our knowledge workers desire. Thankfully, we have an awesome team in County Council to help us manage and navigate those waters. Our goals, I'll just talk about a couple. One includes expanding the Agile organization, which again is about various work delivery models and flexibility. We want to explore a phased retirement option for full-time employees to work part-time schedules while beginning to draw retirement benefits. This can help with knowledge transfer and mentoring opportunities. Another goal is to redesign performance management. We want to continue to strengthen the relationship between supervisors and employees and build on the coaching culture that includes goal setting and one-on-one meetings and feedback. But we want to eliminate the traditional performance evaluations and numerical ratings. And finally, thanks to Measure A and your support, we've worked with a human services agency to expand the Supported Training and Employment Program for emancipated foster youth to year-round. As you're aware, this program received recognition from CSAC as a Challenge Award winner. And so here's a condensed version of the video that CSAC produced about the program.
My favorite part of my job is giving back. I'm a former foster youth for San Mateo County. I was emancipated when I was eighteen. I'm twenty-four years old now. I'm in school currently and I'm ordered for accounting. It's something I want to do in life. I'm so grateful just to have the opportunity to work and give back to a former and current foster youth.
The dedication and commitment of the county employees that are coaches are really key to the success of the program.
It makes things easier on me to know that I have a son. I look up to him as a coach. I think we connect very well.
Really having that day-to-day coach who's there to help this young person navigate this world of work that they've never really been exposed to.
Sit down with them, talk about those core competencies. Talk about what is professionalism, talk about what is time management.
It's a great opportunity for youth as well as county employees to take on that coaching mentor role to someone like me who's looking to intern and possibly get their foot in the door in the county.
We're also able to support you on their transition to adulthood.
They're getting a sense of accomplishment, they're getting motivated, and they're getting inspired. They've worked with our programs here that we have available for foster youth to help them with transitional planning. So what do they want to do next? Do they want to, you know, enroll in college? Do they want to change their major? Do they want to do a vocational trade program?
Everybody can benefit from this program. Jeffrey is benefiting because he's able to get that experience, that firsthand job experience. He's also able to give back to other youth. He's inspiring other youth to want to be just like him and come back and do the same thing. And for us, we're getting the firsthand experience from Jeffrey and from the youth of what they need, what they want, what, what, what works, what doesn't work.
As public servants, you know, we're committed to serve the community, and this is a great opportunity for anybody to interact with the community and to make a difference.
It's a, it's a love-love relationship between the program and the county. It's a great thing moving forward.
From Jeffrey, you know, it's a love-love relationship between the county and the youth. How powerful is that? So I'd like to thank your Board, the county manager, Peggy, my department head colleagues, and our HR team that just make this such a great place to work. And a special shout-out to the HR team that works hard every day to support our most valuable resource, our county employees. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Valancourt. Questions, comments? Thanks for your report, Donna, and all, all the great work. Couple, a couple of things. So you, you pointed out that, that your premium increase for the health benefits was extremely, extremely low. And could you tell us kind of how we were able to achieve that? It was so markedly lower than the, the benchmark and...
Yeah.
And is this, is something special about this year, or maybe we'll see another...
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to wait and see what it is next year. It was markedly lower. We actually had a reduction in Kaiser. It was a four percent decrease in rates. And then Blue Shield, it was, I think, a four percent increase. So it ended up being about two percent overall. We do think that it has to do with the health of our workforce, but it also could have some other market influences.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big, big item for us.
Yes.
Could you remind me what kind of programs we, we have for our younger employees? You know, say, employees, say, thirty-five and, and under. It's to try to recruit younger people and keep them excited about government service?
Sure. So we have a lot of efforts going on, if you're talking about people that aren't employees yet, in terms of bringing people on and internships. We're part of several internship programs, a regional internship program, the Foster Youth Internship Program. So again, we're trying to, to really get youth excited about public service. The Management Fellowship Program is another one of those programs as well.
Because our, our average age in the county is probably...
Forty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the average employee, average employee, forty-six.
Right. It's down one year. It was forty-seven, so we're going...
All right. So we got some room to hire some younger people?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Supervisor Tissia.
I just wanted to give you a shout-out on your wellness program.
Oh, thank you.
I think it's terrific. And I think, I hope more and more people take advantage of it because I think it's really good to have that benchmark every year to be able to get checked out and then follow through on some additional things. I think that really makes for a healthy workforce.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you for that.
It's helped me too, for sure.
Anybody else? Supervisor?
Yeah, just, well, first of all, I just wanted to really thank you for your help with the recruitment of our ED for Heart. I was, I was thinking, trying to think of the name of the, the analyst. One was Chet.
Chet.
And Lisa, and there was a third one as well, analyst working with us as well. So I just, you know, you're just so helpful and willing to pitch in. It's really greatly appreciated. And those, your analysts did really an outstanding job.
Awesome.
So really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank you for, congratulate you and heap all kinds of accolades for that youth program. That is just really phenomenal and, you know, it's, I, I know John Malp and I always go speak to those...
Yes.
Young, young people. And it's really kind of inspiring. What you guys have done is, is really saving people and providing a path for success for the future. So congratulations on doing that. I just have one question.
Sure.
You already, or answered, I think, the question on the impediments to recruitment. It sounds like it's housing, traffic, you know, being able to live in this area. But when people resign, is there like a common theme? I mean, our, our retention rate is actually pretty good.
It's pretty good. It actually is pretty good. People that resign, there's, there's really not a, a theme. There's all kinds of reasons, but transportation is one of them, housing is one of them. Sometimes they are able to have promotional opportunities in other organizations, so ours aren't coming up quick enough. So those are probably the three top reasons why people leave.
Well, thanks for your presentation and thanks for the really outstanding job that you and your whole team does.
Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to give you a shout-out for Career Day. And thanks for the invitation to be there and be with Mr. Malp. But I don't know about the county manager, but when I arrived there, I was figuring there'd be about a hundred people or seventy-five people. And opened up the door to that room with the, with the speed interviewing and the headshots and all the resources. It was amazing. And then it turned out there were nearly seven hundred people, seven hundred employees there. So that was quite a turnout. And I know that was a lot of work by everybody on your staff, and it's sincerely appreciated. And I know that the people that attended that seminar are truly grateful for the opportunity. There were, as I mentioned, free headshots there for people for resume purposes and just a wealth of resources. So thank you to you and your team.
Yeah, it wasn't just my team. It was actually, it took a village. There was people from across the county that, that participated in this committee. I wish I could thank them all, but yeah.
Thank you.
Pass it along.
Thanks to everybody. Okay. Thank you for the report.
Okay.
Okay, Fred, that's a hard act to follow. You're up next, Agriculture and Weights and Measures, Director Crowder. No pressure.
There's no better-looking PowerPoint than HR.
Way to the sublime here, so. But anyway, I, I wanted to also take this moment, wearing the Agricultural Commissioner hat, to recognize the season, pumpkin festival, and, and also the peak of Brussels sprout season as well. So eat your sprouts and it's a little late to get your pumpkins, but you can still buy some. So enough fun and frivolity. Good morning, Members of the Board, Presidents Slocum, County Manager Malp, and Council Byers. I'm Fred Crowder, the County Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. And I'm trying to figure, this new, this little board here is just throwing me. I'm trying to figure out how to, how to handle my paper and get myself centered in here. I didn't have a chance to run through this. Upside down.
Do you need clicker training too?
There we go. I need training as well. Yeah, we didn't have a chance to come and review this, so. This, I don't remember this clicker. Seems unfamiliar. Anyway, I'm pleased to be here to present our Performance Report for 2015-2017. And our department mission statement is to protect agricultural and environmental resources, ensure the safe use of pesticides, and provide consumer protection and equity in the marketplace. The, the first one really pertains to about eight agricultural programs. Many of them have to do with pest exclusion and eradication and pest prevention. Ensure the safe use of pesticides. We regulate pesticide use and we also investigate illness, pesticide-related illnesses. And that's regardless if it's in the agricultural community, whether it's in the structural community, fumigations, those types of things, or if it's in residential or institutional, which might be hospitals or custodial. And so if you hear of any pesticide-related instances or you have any questions concerning pesticides, please contact my office. Weights and Measures is the last one there. Provide consumer protection. We have five programs that cover that. And Weights and Measures actually gets a shout-out eleven times in the Old Testament. So it, it's a program that goes way back. It's also in the American Constitution. England doesn't have this type of thing. But it is absolutely the basis and the foundation for commerce and having a fair marketplace and having a transparent industry. And so I'm very proud of our staff for the job that they do there. So getting on to our headline measures here, we can see that our, our, our goal here is four percent, and we're down there at two percent. Why is this? It might be that this is percentage of shipments inspected at San Francisco International Airport, that we, we inspect agricultural shipments as they come in to see if there's any actionable pests on them. This is our pest exclusion program. The first step in keep, in preventing pests is to keep them from coming in. And so we're well below our goal there, which actually was set back when our, our pests, we were finding about seven percent on shipments. The reasons for this, I mean, there's, there's a couple of them. It could be that we're not seeing the pests that are there, we're not doing our job. Or two, the shipments are cleaner. And so to, to sort this out, we've actually talked to Los Angeles County and LAX because they have a similar freight inspection facility that we have here. And they're similarly seeing two to three percent in, in shipments with pests in them. And so that kind of mirrors what we're doing, which, which for us, you know, emphasizes that we're, we're probably doing the job. We're also providing training for our staff, doing job shadowing and working with USDA, who actually does a similar function on international shipments. Percent of businesses in compliance with Weights and Measures regulations, our target is ninety-five percent, which is extremely optimistic when we're talking about businesses in general. If we were talking about just gas pumps and devices, grocery scales, you'd see a ninety-five percent compliance rate. However, included in this is also hot water meters. And with all the construction that's going on here in San Mateo County, we're seeing a lot of hot water meters installed in the apartments and the residences that are being constructed. And they are notoriously poor as devices. And so we have a very high failure rate, which has pulled down our compliance here. Additionally, this includes, this includes what we call blue tags, which is if we find a device is out of compliance and it's in favor of the business, we red-tag it, we immediately take it out of service. If the device is in favor of the customer, we issue a blue tag, which is they can keep using that device, but they have thirty days to fix it to bring it into compliance because those devices have to be accurate. That's what the law says. And so when we look at blue tags, those instances where they're actually giving product weight, we find that there's about a five percent increase in the compliance rate, and we're looking at about ninety-five percent. So really, this one, we need to work on our, our performance measure here because the idealism and the, and what's, and what's a reasonable expectation, we need to bring those together. Percent of performance goals met. We are improving, but clearly there is room for further improvement, and we are aspiring to do so. Percent of customers, these are our administrative goals here, providing, rating our services as good or better is one hundred percent. As a regulatory agency, I find that, I'm very proud of that. It really is... It really is a testament to our staff, their maturity, their training, their expertise, and, and, and their ability to obtain compliance without ruffling a lot of feathers. Cost per county, cost per capita on countywide services, the goal, this is compared to Association of Bay Area Counties, is a dollar eighty-seven is the goal and we're looking at, interesting. There's no value there. That's the first time I've seen that glitch. Anyway, the value that should be in there is one sixty-two. And so we're actually below the cost per capita for other A-Bag counties, indicating that we have more inspections per taxpayer's dollar and have higher efficiencies. I hope that, oh, good. Okay, the numbers are back. This one, employees rating their experiences working for the county as good or better is down to eighty-three percent. We had a high of ninety-four percent in eleven-twelve. Why is it going down? We have more employees taking the survey, which is certainly gonna, you know, kind of bring you down a little bit because we only had a couple of employees take it back before. We're encouraging everybody to take the survey and we really look at their responses to help guide our training, department policy, and our decision-making. Additionally, we're working with human resources on the eighty-three because this is the first year that the survey also went to extra help employees, not just our full-time employees. And there's many questions on the survey that don't really apply to extra help employees. And so I am fine with the extra help employees taking the survey because I want to hear what they have to say. But what I'd like to do is to be able to identify them separately from our full-time permanent employees so we can compare apples to apples. Next is percent of evaluations completed annually. We have a hundred percent. We have forty employees that, ten, ten extra hires. And so that's, that's, that's pretty good. Highlights, Asian citrusella detection and suppression. I predict, we had it in, in Pacifica and Daly City last year it was found. And we had an eradication project, which is very expensive. And I, at the time, I speculated that we'd find it on the Bayside this year because Asian citrusella is, is moving throughout the state. I was glad to be wrong and we did not find it this year. And we have done a substantial amount of trapping looking for it and we continue to do so in order to keep it out of the county. Agricultural omsudsman, and as fresh as it gets, the agricultural omsudsman, working through the Resource Conservation District, had thirty-seven projects, completing twenty-eight of them, working with our growers and our agricultural community to, just to work through the, the regular, regulatory process here in the county. As fresh as it gets, we have wide grower participation and public recognition and presence at community events. Most recently, seniors on the move with Congress member Spears and Supervisor Tissier was there as well. So weed management, lots of dead jubater grass and pescadero, I am very pleased with that. Staff development and succession planning. When I came to work here, we didn't have any staff who had deputy's licenses. Now we have six of them with both agriculture and sealer licenses. And this last year, we had one of our members on our staff pass the agricultural commissioner's licensing exam. And so that's somebody who can take my place, which is, which is excellent. And we have another staff who's preparing to take the exam. So, and, and this is about our department's future in succession and continuity and quality of services. So I'm very proud of that. Highlights, community outreach and education. We spent a lot of time this year working with the community, engaging Puente Cooperative Extension, USDA, CDFA Department of Food and Agriculture, on educational workshops to engage the community and outside of the regulatory arena. As, as a regulatory agency, we, it's, it's really good to be able to talk with growers, farm workers, beekeepers, ranchers, and the public in a, in a setting that's not a regulatory setting and provide education in that. So, and wellness, we have very high staff participation. And I already mentioned customer, industry satisfaction and performance assessments on all staff. We had a hundred percent on both of those. Goals, this next year is distribution of the updated customer satisfaction survey. I have to, one, caveat to the hundred percent satisfaction, small survey group. We send out hundreds of surveys, only a percentage of those come back. And so we've been working with the, the customer survey work group to develop a better survey tool and we're going to be employing that and getting it out there. So, let's see. Education and outreach I just discussed. Installation implementation of web-based, what do you want to call it, web-based systems. We have one called Cal Peets that we're bringing on board this year. We have unique needs for our regulatory programs. They don't typically meet, you, you can't put together a software program or an application that can be used throughout the county. Even our times, even our timesheet program is a specialized program, the daily. And so we work with, through my association, other agricultural commissioners in the state to develop software to help us with our programs. And this one, we're going to be implementing this next year, which is to help us with tracking of pesticide use enforcement activity. Goals, I spoke to these earlier, but high level of customer service and employee satisfaction and continued staff development and succession planning are, continue to be high on the list. Challenges, assistance in the development of a county medical marijuana policy, that could well change with Prop sixty-four, so we'll see in a few days, but we'll continue to be active in that, as well as ongoing development and testing of these web-based programs that I just discussed. Increasing pest introductions such as Asian citrusella, glassy winged sharpshooter, European grapevine moth continues to be a problem and funding for these programs has been going down. With the recession, the Department of Food and Agriculture received a forty percent cut in its, its budget. The governor's office has not restored those funds and a lot of those funds were pest exclusion. Studies have shown that for every dollar you spend on pest exclusion, you save ten to fourteen dollars in pest eradication or pest management costs. And we've been having a record infestations and eradication projects here in the state. I mean, literally an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure in these circumstances. And the governor's office is, their philosophy is that these costs should be borne by the agricultural industry. However, these pests are brought in by residents who are on vacation, that are smuggling fruit. These are not growers. And these pests impact the community in general. They're not just about agricultural pests, but these affect, affect our fruit trees and our community gardens and our backyards. They affect our street trees. So these aren't just agricultural problems, but community problems. And so we're working with my association to draft a letter to the governor's office and to the Department of Food and Agriculture to encourage funding, to restore funding for these programs. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions? Comments? Respectivas?
If, if the governor thinks that the ag community ought to be paying for those programs, how does he intend, intend on raising the revenue? Well, I guess you don't have to answer that. They know what it is.
Those, those funds have generally come out of the state's general fund is where those monies have come from. And so when the state general fund was, was falling, when there was a shortfall, you know, he cuts, he cut across all the programs statewide. And as, as the funds in the general, state general fund have come up, you know, he's been, been restoring some programs, but the Department of Food and Agriculture, he's been looking at the industry to pay those costs. The industry has been stepping up on Asian citrusella in Southern California and European grapevine moth. They have just about virtually borne the costs of management of those programs. And, you know, they're, they're very stretched, they're stretched very thin.
Well, thanks for the work that you do. I know that the agricultural community on the coast, I really appreciate your professionalism. So, thanks.
Thank you.
One quick question, Director. I'm curious about, in other states that have passed marijuana laws like Colorado, do you know if they've experienced infestations of certain, I don't know, pests or bugs or whatever it is that would attack...
Cannabis?
Cannabis.
No, I'm not aware of any. Some of these, some of these pests are general pests and they, they might have an impact on that crop. But that hasn't been an issue at this time. It'll be interesting because cannabis is a, in order to have a pesticide and use it on a crop, it has to be, it has, in California, it has to go through the registration process with EPA. And since this is not recognized as a viable crop or a legal crop by the, by the federal government, there is no registration process or registration allowance in EPA for cannabis. And so if there are pests on cannabis, you really can't use a pesticide on it lawfully. And so there are some exempt products that they can use, things like soaps and oils, but, but it does substantially restrict their ability to, to manage pests.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, they, as I understand it, a lot of the marijuana is actually pretty much impacted by pesticides. So somehow they are using something...
The, those, that's illegal grows. That, that's, that's, those unlawful grows that, that you typically, that, you know, have been featured in the drug, you know, the war on drugs, where they're grading hillsides, removing, you know, water from creeks and, and using rodenticides and other insecticides. But that's unlawful use. And so when we bring, so, you know, once, once we start establishing a legitimate industry and having regulatory oversight, you know, those, those types of activities will substantially be obeyed as long as there's enforcement out there.
So do we know, are they using the pesticides to hold down weeds or, or to protect the plant or...
A lot of it's rodenticides.
Yeah.
To keep out mice and rats out of the crop itself.
So the mice and rats will eat the roots?
They, and the, and the plant and harvested crop. The biggest problem on, on cannabis are mites and little teeny tiny crawling insects.
Yeah.
And those can be treated with, with oils and, and a lot of time, and so for the industry itself, for the legitimate industry that's developing, that's one of their products of choice, styloid oils.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
We're not going to make any jokes about the mice eating the plants.
Yeah, yeah.
Forget it. We're not doing that.
I'd be glad to talk with you further about this at another time when we have more time.
Not going there. Okay. Thank you, Director Crowder, for the report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Director Dispain, the library.
Good morning, President Slougham, honorable members of the board, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Beers. I'm Ann Marie Dispain and I'm the library director for San Mateo County Libraries and I am pleased to present the library's annual report. Established as a county-free library in nineteen twelve, the San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in nineteen ninety-nine. Approximately, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand people live within the boundaries of the library's legal taxing district, which you see in the dark blue. That covers about three hundred and fifty-one square miles. Through our twelve community libraries, our bookmobile and our e-library, we provide services to our eleven-member cities as well as all of the unincorporated areas in the county. One of the most significant activities completed this year was the development and approval of our new five-year strategic plan. The process we used was outward-facing. We engaged and considered the input of over seven thousand five hundred community members. Our new vision is to ignite growth through transformative experiences. And our new mission is to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and an environment for learning. Three strategic goals are included in the plan and represent the best of what libraries can do and be. First, understand community needs and then align services to meet those needs. Second, create spaces that support discovery, enrich lives, and uplift the community. And third, continue to be leaders in early literacy and lifelong learning. I mentioned that we gathered valuable data from our community during the strategic planning process. One of the key lessons we learned is that we need to do a better job in communicating our impact and marketing our programs. To better tell our story, we updated and created a new brand. And you're looking at our new logo here. It consists of a simple and imaginative burst of knowledge symbol. And it represents the spread of information, our family of libraries, and the excitement that emanates from learning something new. Our corresponding tagline, "Open for Exploration," speaks to the essence of who we are as well as our various roles in the community. Open access to information, a celebration of open-mindedness, and a welcoming atmosphere that one can expect to experience as they step into our spaces or use our services. Our new brand video shows the energy and excitement of where we are today and where I never get tired of seeing that little boy's face. Our library system is recognized as one of the nation's top libraries. We were named a four-star library for the eighth consecutive year by Library Journal. We currently rank eighteenth nationwide and second in California among our peer libraries. This professional award is based on several performance measures that we track throughout the year, including circulation, visitors, programs and attendance, and number of library cardholders. Shown here is the most recent data. It includes fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen. And you can see that San Mateo County Libraries is in the dark blue. In the light blue are, are peer libraries in the state. And then in orange are the peer libraries that we compare ourselves to in the nation. This year, the library reached similar benchmarks that led to these per capita figures. We circulated three point three million items. We served two point two million library visitors, offered more than eleven thousand programs to over three hundred and seventeen thousand attendees, and sixty percent of our service population have a library card. In addition to the numbers we track, library staff has already been working toward the goals in the new strategic plan. I'd like to highlight a few of our significant accomplishments that are included in the annual report from this past year. We are open for access. We know that access to information and technology has, has the power to change a person's future. By broadening the opportunities for patrons to experience cutting-edge technology and important resources, San Mateo County Libraries are helping to bridge the digital divide. Library users now have the opportunity to choose from an increasing number of options for gaining access to the internet and library resources, including the ability to borrow Wi-Fi hotspots and laptops. We updated our website this year to make it easier for everyone to access a large array of online resources as well as digital materials. Last year, our e-library had four point four million visits. We provided one point four million wireless connections and over two hundred thousand hours of public computer time at our libraries. As the maker movement grows, we've continued to expand our lineup of innovative programs aimed at makers of all ages. We've introduced our communities to the boundless opportunities available through learning to use sewing machines, turntables, cooking classes, as well as three D printing. In the coming year, we will be designing and dedicating space geared specifically for these purposes. We are open for transformation. We believe the spaces where discoveries take place are as critical to learning as the programs we offer. This year, San Mateo County Libraries continue to revamp and rebuild our spaces, ensuring that they remain incomparable destinations for generations to come. We said goodbye to a few and we dreamed of the new. The newly renovated library in Woodside reopened in April and planning efforts are underway in Atherton, Brisbane, East Palo Alto... underway in Atherton, Brisbane, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, and Pacifica to update these facilities with libraries that meet 21st century needs. This year has truly been unprecedented in the number of library facility projects. The majority of these projects, as well as city improvement projects, in North Fair Oaks, South San Francisco, and Daly City were made possible because of the support of Measure A funds along with the required local match. Thank you for supporting these important community gathering and learning spaces. We are open for learning. We know that libraries are a critical partner in the educational learning ecosystem. San Mateo County Library's steadfast commitment to enriching our communities remained a major focus this year as we expanded the scope of our services. Staff increased the number of cultural programming as well as language materials available. We implemented a new online high school graduation program and started a training and mentoring series for aspiring entrepreneurs. Additionally, our innovative Talk Read See program was expanded. This data-driven and award-winning program helps parents increase the number of words spoken in the home using a talk pedometer. And that little girl is wearing the little cover-up that holds that technology. This encourages brain development and language acquisition in young children. Finally, summer learning. The library's Summer Learning Challenge offered a fun opportunity for kids to keep discovering and growing even when school is out. Through the support of Measure A funds, 57% of our youth in the service population participated in summer learning. We also initiated a summer youth workforce development program. The program hired 40 high school and college-age students to support our 2015 program. And we scaled up and hired nearly 200 interns to support our 2016 program. Our summer camp program expanded significantly. We were very excited to be selected by the Big Lift to scale up our library summer camp programs and serve more than 800 kids at local schools throughout the county. San Mateo County Libraries was responsible for the afternoon portion of the day. And working with our partners, we focused on providing the kinds of experiences and quality enrichments that all children should have access to during the summer. These include project-based and hands-on learning, yoga and mindfulness, healthy meals, exciting field trips, as well as high interest and high-quality books for the home. So I have one more short video and this really shows you our summer of success.
Most kids lose about three months of learning in the summertime. It just widens year after year after year. And we did assessments with the children before and after. None of the children experienced any learning loss, so 100%, at least retained what they left school with, which is huge. We're really, really proud of them.
Actually seeing in person this great system totally changed my perspective.
Part of the job was reaching out into the community and informing people about our summer learning program.
You really get to know the community, which is really cool. I'll be at the Ashton Library, the public with the free meals program, and I'll know kind of what they like, what they don't like, or know kind of the personalities, which is really cool to me, just being able to connect with people in that way.
It's just about sparking interest in their minds.
San Mateo County Library included more youth in the county than ever before in high-quality summer learning experiences. Close to half of kids in this county were engaged in activities with us this summer.
Let's just call our Summer Learning Challenge, right? And this is your log here. And we'll give you a free book. We'll also give you a raffle ticket to possibly win a $1,000 scholarship or Giants ticket.
The other cool thing is you get a free book today. You're going to pick any of these books you're going to keep forever and you're never going to return. Sound like a deal?
So I hope my presentation has shown that libraries are more relevant today than ever. San Mateo County Libraries remains uniquely positioned to respond to community needs and to be an innovative leader for the future. I want to thank you for your continued support of the library system, in particular Supervisor Groom for her work as chair of the library's governing board this past year, as well as Peggy Jensen, who chaired our operations committee. I also want to thank all of our amazing staff, friends, and volunteers for their dedication and hard work. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the fine report. Amazing. Supervisor Groom.
Thank you, President Slokum and Anne Marie, thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments about how innovative the library system has been, especially regarding the Big Lift. The San Mateo County Library is such an integral part of the Big Lift, not just with the summer programs for which they've excelled, but just every day being part of the thinking about literacy and providing the right and appropriate books for children and being on the scene when needed to be. It's just grown, the value of the library system and the Big Lift has just grown and grown and grown. To me, they were the stars of the summer program. I went to just about every one of our summer programs at least once and have lots of great memories, but my favorite was two little boys talking about how you build airplanes and how the propellers work. And they were spread out all over them building their plane. And when they finished, they picked up their books, put them under their arm and went out and the day was over. So every, these kids probably had not been reading books particularly at home, and now they're taking them home every night. It was just a great moment. And the second thing is, as you saw the new logo, Anne Marie is very shy, is very shy about tooting her own horn, but we have all set through rebranding programs in our not-for-profit lives. And I've never seen one that came out better than it was supposed to look and the seamlessness with which it was done. And I think, you know, you see all these new slides, how beautiful it is. But it was just, you know, you sit in these meetings and say, oh, God, is this really going to work? And it did, and it's better. So congratulations to you and your team.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman.
Well, my comment, just as I was really impressed with your presentation, and I think it's one of the best programs that we've ever done out of Measure A. I mean, we've got a lot of great ones, but this is really the future. And so the things that we do with young people really pay off in the long run. And I especially appreciate the support I had on the library on the coast side from both county manager's office Supervisor Groom, as well as the whole board. And your leadership on that as well, because it was controversial and it's going to make a big addition to the whole coast side. So thanks for what you do. Thanks for the report. And I really appreciate the slides on the children. They're very heartwarming. So thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Plaid.
A great presentation. It's really fantastic to see how the library is evolving. And it's interesting that you're incorporating some of those Maker Faire buildings into the library. You know, one thing that I'd never seen before was that talk, you mentioned the talk monitor. Could you just tell me a little more about that? Because we all know how important it is for very young children to hear their parents or have their parents talking to them, reading to them.
Yeah, we're working with a research firm, the Lena Research Foundation. They're out of Boulder, Colorado. And it's the same program that you may have read about that Providence, Rhode Island implemented. But essentially, it's a little device that records the kids wear. You saw that little cover-up, the kids wear, and it tracks the number of words. And it's smart enough to differentiate between what, like what they hear through the TV and what they hear with their parents. And so then we enroll them in a program and the families set goals. And then they come back and they are able to find out using real data whether or not they met those goals. So it's a really fabulous program. And I'm glad that it's getting the recognition that it deserves. We're expanding it. It's been in East Palo Alto and on the coast side. And we are working with the housing department and some other agencies to expand it to some other communities. I think it's expanded to Pacifica and then a couple other communities this next year.
Great, good work. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Tissia.
Just briefly, I had the good fortune along with Carol to go to the grand reopening of the South San Francisco Library, thanks to your district money. I know you were out of the country at the time, but it was unbelievable, the number of families, the number of children there. It was just incredible. I mean, they really, really were looking forward to that library. So thank you for the great efforts there as well, because that really turned out to be fantastic. One, it just opened that library up. And two, much more room for everybody, computers, you name it, it was there in a beautiful Carnegie building. So well worth saving.
Thank you. I want to thank you for everything that you do. I know that at the North Fair Oaks Library, the summer program is wildly popular with those kids. One suggestion, all the kids on graduation day were very sad that they didn't get to take the yoga mats with them. And they're really into yoga and mindfulness and all that. So maybe we can put our heads together and figure out how to get some yoga mats for these kids that are in this yoga program. I think that's so important to learn.
Mix in yoga mats, okay.
Yeah, yoga mats. And the other thing I would just mention is that I do follow the libraries on Instagram, your system and the individual libraries who participate in Instagram. And I always enjoy the pictures of the kids and the activities. And there are a lot of activities going on in those libraries, judging by the photos on Instagram. So thank you for everything that you and your team do. It's sincerely appreciated and it does make a difference.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to Director Finley and our park system.
Good morning, President Slokum, honorable members of the board and county council buyers. So let's talk about parks. I'm Marlene Finley, the Director of San Mateo County Parks, and it's an honor to be here representing the 66 park staff employees. Our mission statement, here's our 66 employees. Our mission statement is to preserve the natural and cultural resources and to provide public access and learning opportunities to enhance communities' members' quality of life. And the big news this year is that our annual park visits are up, up 23%, surpassing 2.5 million. I've never seen a jump like this in my career. And you might wonder why. Well, let's take a look. San Mateo County manages world-class parks close to home. And as an example, here you see Humpback Whales that spent the winter here. They were with us for over 12 months, right off the coast. You could, from Pillar Point Bluff to Devil's Slide Trail to Marada West and beyond, you could watch this. And this footage was taken by Ranger Rob Calla. These girls in the pink t-shirts are from Brown Girls Surf. It's a nonprofit group out of Oakland that comes over and brings girls every Saturday to learn how to surf right off Marada West. So we do know more too about why people are visiting our parks and why our numbers are up. This year, we conducted a survey in partnership with San Francisco State University Recreation Parks and Tourism Program. And we learned that people are visiting county parks for wellness, not only for physical well-being, but also for mental well-being. We also know they visit parks for scenic views and to connect with nature, as you just saw. Also, in our performance measures, we look at the customer survey responses, rating our services good or better. And here you see, we also have a big jump in our numbers this year. 99% of the people surveyed, that's 2,400 surveys conducted in county parks this spring, 99% of the people surveyed reported that their experience was good or very good. We learned that park visitors appreciate park rangers. In fact, of all the different ways they receive information, they prefer, the majority of people prefer the method of receiving information from park staff. Also, seeing rangers makes them feel safe in parks. That ranger presence is so important, as you know and as you've supported, our park rangers. People are also very happy with our trail system. When we take a look at another metric, we look at annual volunteer hours. Our hours are up. We're above our target. We're over 34,000 hours of volunteer service. And what we attribute this to is a big uptick in corporate volunteers. We've done more outreach and we've recruited groups like Salesforce, who pledged 2,000 hours of volunteer service this past year. And that was conducted at Unibara Sarah Park. This year, they focused their attention on Coyote Point. So volunteers are up. Overall, our cumulative goals across all measures are up, as you can see here, and you can note the trend in the measures that we report. Our cost per capita, this is our net appropriations divided by the number of residents in San Mateo County, remains at $20 per capita. And this is a good bargain when you look at other parks and open spaces around the Bay Area. Now we'll take a look at percent of employees in the parks department rating their experience working for the county as good or better. And here you see a slight dip. And this is based on the employee engagement survey. So I dug a little deeper in that survey to better understand what's going on. When I looked at it, 84% of the park employees enjoy the work that they do. But for those that rated lower in their rating the experience working for the county as good or better, they report that they wanted more favorable work conditions. And that when talking with employees, I know that working weekends, parks are open weekends, it's tough. Part of the job's working weekends. And also, more would like to work a 4:10 schedule throughout the year. We do that seasonally, but we need to have coverage across the year and across the hours that parks are open. And another was that park employees want more career opportunities. So those are a couple that we could pull out of the survey. And then a number reported, none of the answers were applicable and they didn't write anything in. So we will continue to circle around this and see how we can bring this up. Next, I wanted to share with you that our employee evaluations completed annually have taken a big jump upwards. And we made this a priority in our department, seeing how low our numbers were the year before. And I wanted to give kudos to Brenda Bennett and Laurel Finnegan, who helped supervisors enter evaluations in the new workday system, because we found that was part of the barrier was the new system. Also, Laurel developed a way of reminding, knowing when employees' evaluations were due and reminding supervisors. So she's set up like a tickler notification system. So that helped as well. Let's talk about Measure A. Measure A, as you know, has been very beneficial for the parks department and for the public that we serve. Looking over 2015 to 2017, the budget cycle we're in, some of the highlights include funding for the Sanchez Adobe in Pacifica. This historic site has not had any major work done on it in over 60 years. And now we have $800,000 in Measure A funds and we're working with partners such as the San Mateo County Historical Association and San Mateo County Parks Foundation to raise the full 1.5 million that it's going to take for a new visitor center, a new restroom, brand-new exhibits, new period furniture in the Adobe, and new pathways in landscaping so that we can double the number of classes that are able to spend time during the school year at Sanchez Adobe, learning about many periods of California history. We also highlight the shuttle program that started in September, the Free Shuttle, every weekend for two years. We received a grant. And then we also are using $80,000 in Measure A funds for community outreach to let people know it's available, as well as additional marketing. Playground improvements, a lot going on in playgrounds, both to upgrade the playground components so they meet current standards. components so they meet current standards and improve it for accessibility. These projects have gone on at Quarry Park, Moss Beach, and Hutter Park. And I was at Quarry Park on Saturday. We have new two- through five-year-old equipment that was just installed, and there were kids playing on the equipment, and I went and asked them, "Well, what do you do with these components?" And they were showing me how everything works, but they said, "Be quiet, because we're hiding from the adults over there." It made me think, "Well, what am I then?" But they were really enjoying the playground. And we have a lot more work to do, too. And we formed a new playground committee in parks with two certified playground inspectors among our rangers that are leading that committee. Next on our list for 2017 and '19, we look forward to improving our aging infrastructure, that is re-rocking the roads in Pescadero Creek County Park and other parks where we had emergency access roads and fire roads, also paving the roads within the campgrounds that are in woeful need of repaving, fixing our water lines. In Hutter, the water lines are leaking, and that's a big, it would be a big boost for water conservation to fix those old water lines. And we have sewer repairs to do. We're very excited about taking the ranger station that's been closed at Sam McDonnell Park, and we have plans to create a visitor center there, and many partners that want to join us. In fact, the nonprofit group Outdoor Afro visited Sam McDonnell Park on Saturday and went for a hike with Ranger Catherine Wright, and they were so excited about the possibilities for telling the story of Sam McDonnell. We also have a lot of tree and tree work to do, both hazard trees and fuel reduction. And so, those are some of the things we look forward to completing in the next two years. But let's take a look at the highlights from the budget that we're in right now. As I mentioned, we completed the survey with San Francisco State University. We wanted to know, who's visiting the parks? What brings them to parks? Who isn't visiting the parks? And what are those barriers that keep people from visiting San Mateo County parks? Some of the things we learned, barriers to participation, is language, being able to present our materials in multiple languages, as well as having park rangers that can speak different languages. In fact, we found that 14 percent of the 2,400 people surveyed speak a language other than English at home, 14 percent. We also learned that 70 percent of our park visitors are county residents. And during the focus groups that were held in East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, Daly City, and Pescadero, we learned that 19 percent of the people in the focus groups don't have a car. So, this is where the shuttle concept and our new shuttle program comes in. So, we know that people want more programs and community outreach, and towards this, we hosted 40 interpretive programs just last year, everything from movie nights to take a hike, to other guided hikes and bio blitzes. We even have a Pokemon Go program coming up soon. Some other highlights for this two years is the GIS work that was accomplished with Student Conservation Association. Here you see a slide of Pillar Point Bluff and invasive species on the bluff that they cataloged. We also have been using technology. We have a new fee machines at Coyote Point that are working very well. In fact, we'd like to expand that program for those parks where we charge a fee. We're using iPads for checking campers in at Memorial Campground and for collecting information about our trails, facilities, and invasive and non-native plants, and also mapping endangered plants as well. We have a new reservation system. Those are just a few highlights. But let's take another look at our technology. This is fire risk maps that we're able to do with GIS. And risk is mapped, the red areas are the highest risk with fire fuels, and that's based on not only the fuel loading, but also the slope, the aspect, the temperature, prevailing winds, and the density of the housing adjacent to the parks. This is very important as we prioritize where we build fuel breaks and how we can use this information in our grant applications. We need to prioritize where we treat fuels, because it isn't a one-time treatment. Once you go in and treat fuels, it's ongoing, and so we want to make sure we're doing it in the right places. Our goals for 2017-19, including completing the Green Valley Trail and the Coyote Point Beach Project, as well as the ballfields at Flood Park and the new playground at Flood Park. We plan to introduce grazing on San Bruno Mountain to improve the habitat, use that grazing as a tool to improve habitat for endangered and threatened butterflies. And towards that, our Natural Resource Management Program Leader Ramona Arechica is working with the Technical Advisory Committee and the Steering Committee for San Bruno Mountain HCP. We also need to improve our park infrastructure. We're working on increasing our public programs and community outreach, which is what our, during the visitor survey, we learned how important that is to the public, both those visiting parks and those that haven't been taking advantage of the county parks. We want to update policies like dog management in county parks. And to do all this, we know it's going to take sustainable funding. So, we'll start with a fee assessment, looking at our current fees and if we're charging the right amount in the right places. I did want to mention some of the challenges we have in county parks, and that includes meeting the need for community engagement outreach and program, meeting those expectations in that need, to continue to have park ranger presence in our growing park system with our increasing use. So, being able to have that presence and do our jobs as the parks grow and our visitation increases, replacing our old infrastructure. And lastly, I wanted to mention how important it is for the Parks Department not to overextend. As we're doing good work, do take on too much too quickly too fast. We want to continue to do high-quality work. We want to sustain that 99 percent satisfaction rate. So, I want to recognize our awesome park staff that scored 99 percent. I want to thank Eduardo Castillo, Manjeet Singh, and Rolando Yocaro that helped with this PowerPoint, and I'd love to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Director. How about if we start with Supervisor Grun?
Thanks, Marlene. I, you know, I think that we're so fortunate to have so much park space in this county, part of, I think, what makes the, one of the reasons that so many people want to live here, is the amount of parks and open space we have. And I do think that you do an excellent job of managing that space. But this is an interesting laundry list of things that need to be done, and we should probably figure out early, you know, how we can attack some of this through Measure A and through other funding, because, as you said, you need that you want to continue the park improvement, the park high numbers of wanting to be there, and this goes with that. But I spend a lot of time in our parks and think it's just one of, you know, a great feature for this county.
Thank you.
Do you break down visitors by specific parks?
We have detailed data by park, and we'd be happy to provide that for each of your supervisor districts as well. We could break that down.
I would like to see it, but in any case, this is a great report, and I'm really impressed with all you've accomplished in a short time. So, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissier?
Actually, I was going to ask that same question about data collection, because I'd be curious to see, because of the distance from North County down to some of the most beautiful parks ever, I'm sort of curious how many people from the north end. I know you said with the focus groups, when you did them up at that end, 19 percent didn't have cars. So, I'm sort of curious, is there a barrier to them getting, being able to get to our parks, for one? And just, you know, having grown up in Daly City, I'd never been to the fair till I got on the fair board. That's how, I didn't even know it existed, because my mother didn't drive, so we didn't have access to things. So, I'm just sort of curious how that affects the North County. And then the shuttle program that you have, can you refresh my memory, where's it going to and from? I think I saw Wonderlic and Edgewood?
Yes. So, the shuttle starts from East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks. Both shuttles go through Redwood City Transit Hub, and then one shuttle goes to Edgewood and the other to Wonderlic. And they start at 9:00 a.m. every Saturday and Sunday morning and end at 5:00 p.m., and it's a continuous loop.
Is there any possibility, and obviously this would be for next year's budget or thereafter, to see about getting some kind of shuttle coming from the North County down to these parks?
We could look into that and apply for grants, because that grant cycle's coming up real soon. One of the things we're learning is with our community engagement, and we also talk with the National Park Service, is having an on-demand shuttle where we work with groups, and then we bring community groups out per reservation. That seems to be very promising. So, we might try, instead of a continuous loop, try that as another pilot.
I was also thinking it might be helpful, and I know park and rec in the city is very different than parks here, but it may be a great conduit, because they can advertise something like that, even if you did do a continuous, or you did on-demand. Do it through the recreation departments in the different cities in the north end, or maybe throughout the entire county. But I think it would give a great opportunity for a lot that probably don't go to the parks.
That's a great point. When I met with the directors last week after the active San Mateo County presentation, a bunch of the city directors, we all went out to lunch, and we were talking, they would like to incorporate more of our transit options, the shuttle, and our programming in their city park and rec catalogs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
So, it's really remarkable, excuse me, to see how much progress we've made with the park system. We think back to the recession, when actually parks was part of public works, and we, you know, it's just so much incredible successes. So, it's really exciting to see. And I'm really particularly pleased with all the programming we've done to help people, when they get to the park, you know, have a special experience, the bio blitzes, the park ranger programs. So, that's all great work. So, following up on Supervisor Tissier's point, you know, one thing that, you know, I'm very passionate about is trying to get kids into the park, and it's not so easy these days, because kids spend a lot of time in front of their video screens. So, maybe we can, as has been discussed, use the shuttle if there's, you know, for pre-arranged youth visits, you know, because it's remarkable how few kids get into, you know, into a forwards-type setting now. But thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. It reminds me of one of the comments, one of the friends of Hutter and Wonderlic was working at the Folger Museum on the weekend when the shuttle arrived, and a father and daughter came into the museum, and the daughter said this was the first time she'd ever been to wilderness. It was touching. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the work. We appreciate it. Do we need to take a short break here for the film business?
That would be great.
Yeah, we'll take a short five-minute break here. Sorry, Mr. Monowitz. Okay, we are back, and we'll pick up with Director Monowitz, Planning and Building Department.
Steve Monowitz, I'm the Community Development Director, and I'm pleased to be here this morning to give you the Planning and Building Performance Report. So, the Planning and Building Department's mission is to plan for and regulate development in order to protect public safety, preserve agricultural and environmental resources, address housing and transportation needs, create healthy and prosperous communities, foster community engagement, and provide exceptional levels of service. In the fiscal year 2015 through '16, we processed over 2,400 building permits, well above our target. Our customer service rating exceeded our target of 90 percent. And while we did not achieve our target for all of our performance goals, our trajectory is in the right direction. One of the primary reasons that we didn't meet our performance objectives with regard to the administrative measures is that we fell below our target for employee evaluations. You can see historically, the department has not been good about providing that regular feedback, and we've made a concerted effort to address that. Our employees rated working for the department slightly below our target. As you can see, over the past four years, we've been hovering into the mid to upper 70 percent. As you know, the work we do is oftentimes difficult and controversial, and I think that contributes to the stress that our employees have to go through. It has also been a time of transition for our department. All of our managers have been on the job two years or less, but we are committed to not only providing exceptional service to the public, but to providing an exceptional place to work for our employees, and we're working hard to achieve that. This table, or chart, if you will, shows our cost per capita as compared to other counties in the Bay Area. This was a difficult exercise to evaluate, because many counties have different setups, different organizations, the way they're planning and building. The department is organized with or without other departments. And I want to thank Heather Hardy, who kind of pulled apart that data, so we could do apples-to-apples comparison. And what we found is that we are below average in terms of cost per capita when compared to other county planning and building departments. So, our highlights for the fiscal year 2015 through '17 include processing record number of permits, as I mentioned, over 2,400 building permits. That's more than the department has ever issued in a single year. That's during the '15-'16 fiscal year. We are making progress on implementation of the North Fair Oaks Community Plan through our zoning amendments. The board has approved the first phase, which on the slide on the left, you can see in the darker blue, that was the southern portion of Middlefield. And we're currently working on Phase 2A along El Camino and hope to have that completed before the end of the 2017 fiscal year. Also, as part of our North Fair Oaks planning, we're pleased to be part of the team working on the Middlefield Road redesign and also the Redwood Junction Master Plan. And we've made good progress in enhancing our code compliance work. As you can see here, we've contracted with a graffiti removal company that's been doing an exceptional job of promptly removing graffiti in North Fair Oaks, and we've participated on an illegal dumping task force to try and address that problem as well. We are working towards implementation of our 2015 housing element. A big component of that is updating our second unit regulations and developing programs to try and encourage these as a type of affordable housing. And we've worked to support the Jobs Housing Gap Task Force and the Home for All Initiative. We've made progress on a variety of coastside transportation improvements, one being the Surfers Beach seawall construction was recently completed on that, and that was an essential thing to protect Highway 1. And right now, we're working on a segment of the parallel trail that will go alongside Highway 1 and provide a safe means for pedestrians and bicyclists to travel up and down the coast. This particular segment that we're working on right now ties in with the recreational trail in Half Moon Bay. Adoption Plan Princeton is one of the things we will be achieving prior to the end of this fiscal year. This is an important project in many ways, and one of the things that I'd like to highlight is it will be a state-of-the-art, it will include a state-of-the-art shoreline management plan that looks at issues related to sea level rise. We will also complete the Coastside Comprehensive Transportation Management Plan. I chose a picture of both a trail and road, because it's not just about improving our roadway systems, it's about improving our trail systems, and it's also about land use and the intensity of development. So, we're looking at all those components in terms of addressing the traffic issues. We've streamlined the permit process for farm labor housing and other agriculturally-related development. Here you see a farm labor housing unit that was recently installed using -- Here you see a farm labor housing unit that was recently installed using, I believe, some of the grant funds that have become available through Supervisor Horsley's office. We've established coastside office hours. We focused primarily on working with the agricultural community to make sure they have the information they need and get that information in timely way, but we are now expanding it to serve all coastside residents. We've collaborated with other agencies and private property owners to develop a Tunis Creek Beach Access Management Plan and the intent here is to preserve the public's ability to enjoy this beach but in a way that is safe and respectful of adjoining private property owners as well as protective of the very sensitive natural environment. We are in the process of completing our updates to the tree regulations and the subdivision regulations. As you may recall, the board recently adopted interim improvements to our tree regulations that will be followed by a comprehensive update and we have a very committed and capable steering committee that's working on that project. We continue to make improvements to our Exela system and the geographic information system. Exela is a product that you can purchase, but once you get it out of the box, there's a lot of customization that needs to happen to fit the particular procedures and needs of a planning and building department. We continue to make improvements in that regard and we've provided our inspectors and code compliance officers with mobile equipment so that they can enter inspection results from the field and also get access to important data that they need to see in order to evaluate what they're looking at. We will be coming to you in the next few months with the updates to the building regulations. The state has a three-year cycle for updating those regulations. In addition to adopting the state's regulations, it's the opportunity for the county to supplement those regulations. And we successfully completed our local hazard mitigation plan and that was essential to maintain our eligibility for FEMA funds in the event of a disaster. As far as our goals for the next two fiscal years, we want to continue to enhance our customer service and develop a one-stop electronic permit shop. This photograph is taken at the city of San Mateo, who, which has implemented a queuing system so people who are waiting know how much time they need to wait before they'll get called up and we will be installing a similar system in our office and really expanding the ability of our clients to submit permit applications online. I'm pleased to report that so far in the fiscal year 1617 period, over 13 percent of our permit applications have been filed online. We will also be continuing to work on our North Fair Oaks zoning updates. This figure shows the other phases of that effort. And we will continue to expand our code compliance and reporting programs. As many of you know, the county has been using a C Click Fix platform called Reported SMC to deal with illegal dumping and there's an opportunity to expand that to other types of code compliance issues. We will be working with county council to develop protections for mobile home parks. This is a picture of the Pillar Ridge manufactured community on the coast side. And we will be working to find an alternative location for the Pescadero Fire Station. We will continue to pursue additional coastal access and transportation improvements. This figure shows improvements proposed at Gray Whale Cove where we'll add a turning lane and enhance pedestrian crossings. And we will work towards modernizing our zoning regulations to maintain their level at which they protect the public's interest but also to make the process as clear and streamlined as we can. Finally, we look forward to continuing to update our general plan. I chose these pictures because one of our priorities is to update our open space and conservation elements. And we will continue to work with the other departments to plan for and implement sustainable capital and infrastructure projects. As far as our challenges go, we expect our permit volume to continue to increase and at the same time, we want to reduce the turnaround time. Parking circulation and infrastructure concerns are commonly coming up as we review development proposals and we need to make sure that we are responding to those concerns effectively. And one of the ways we can do that is implementing effective community outreach and collaboration. Tracking and responding to new laws and policies is always a challenge. I've got a few examples here, Regional Water Quality Control Board requirements, ABAG's Plan Bay Area, and then Proposition 64 are just a few of the examples that could change the landscape within which we work. Staying on top of technology and continuing to improve our database and our online capacity is a priority for us as is succession planning so we can continue to build the future of the Planning and Building Department and provide exceptional service to our clients. As far as that Measure A goes, the Measure A funds have been focused on addressing the housing crisis primarily, second unit and small house policies. We're developing a no-net-loss policy as well as affordable housing overlay zone where we will encourage and provide incentives for affordable housing and we've already implemented the Affordable Housing Impact Fee. So, I'd like to thank the board for your ongoing support, the county manager's office and county council's office that really provides tremendous assistance to us in all these efforts as well as to my staff. So, Heather Hardy here is here and so is Richard Vlejoos. Richard started as an intern and he's moved on and is working our GIS system now and he was instrumental in helping putting this presentation together. Also, Anna Santiago from our Code Compliance Unit is here. And on behalf of all our staff, I'd like to express our appreciation to your, for your support and our desire to provide continued exceptional service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monowitz. Supervisor Horsley?
I have a few questions. Thanks for presentation.
Anything you missed on the coast?
I would have to say that I am really understanding of difficulties your staff has to deal with because I also see the, you know, the complaints and the, not, you know, I think that people don't like change and they fight change and it's, it's difficult and so I'm really sympathetic to how difficult it is for staff people to, you know, be enthusiastic when they're sometimes, oftentimes unfairly attacked. So, I think you've done a great job, by the way, and I really think you have grown into an outstanding planning director. I also want to thank that you do a lot of the code enforcement. I see Joan in the back and Anna Santiago we work a lot with over in Princeton and have made a significant difference in that community, such a significant difference that I'm being criticized for gentrifying, for getting rid of all the junk and the boats that were full of toxic substances and stuff, you know, some people like junk, I guess. But, any case, it's actually, it's cleaned up considerably and I know we are working on with the propane plant of making that much safer for both of the potential of a big wave as well as the Pillar Ridge manufactured home residents. I am curious though about the shoreline management in Princeton and, because I know that there was some, we were kind of expecting more from the planners, not your planners but the consultant, and where are we at with that?
Yeah, you know, one of the dangers of contracting work out is, you know, oftentimes you don't get the product you were hoping for, expecting, and so we have expressed our concerns to that contractor and they have responded with, just recently, a proposal to address those concerns. So, things are moving in the right direction in that regard.
Okay. The other thing is there were some maps about, switch of subjects, about hazard mitigation and it looked, it's the one that, it's on the highlights, 1517 highlights, if you go back a little bit more. Oh, well. In that case, I was curious, does that indicate the potential of wildland fires or is, or is that?
I believe it's, it shows the, there's a certain term for it.
Man slides or sliding or?
Let's see if I can read it on the screen. Oops. I must press the wrong button. I believe it's, it's areas susceptible to wildland fires essentially, areas that have high susceptibility of wildland fires. And so, when you're in those areas, we have additional standards to address the risks of fire.
Okay. I'd like to take a look at that, drill it down a little closer to take a look at specifically some of those areas, but we can do that offline at some other points, so just thanks. Thanks for the job that you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Horsley. Any other questions, comments?
I do think we all recognize how demanding your job is and how difficult the pressures are sometimes from the public, so we're all very grateful for the way you, you know, accommodate public input and, you know, and your staff produces good work under sometimes very trying situations.
Thank you very much.
I really, I really appreciate the quickness and the thoroughness of what you did, the tree plan, the Heritage Tree Plan especially. I think that, you know, it was, again, it was a little bit under the gun, but it was done so well and so quickly that I think that we made that neighborhood particularly happy and calmed them down.
Well, thank you very much and I'd like to take the opportunity to give a shout-out to Joe Leclair, our Planning Manager, who really did the legwork on that.
Right.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to just give a shout-out to Heather and Anna Santiago and all the other folks in your department who are out on the street and making things better for residents, improving the quality of life. I think you've accomplished a great deal during your tenure and as I look back, when I first came on the board, I just would say we've made significant progress and to you and your team, it's appreciated sincerely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One last comment here by Supervisor Tissier.
Just out of curiosity, one of the things I noticed that you mentioned, you know, the increases in the permits and, you know, that stretches staff and all, and I'm just hoping that as you move forward, if it gets that point again where you're having to process too many things and not enough people, I mean, this happened when I first got here where it was so busy that people were touching files but they never finished any files. You have a great, or have done a great job of making sure that you address everything that comes through, but we also tried to adjust with staffing and all. So, I would hope that if this is going to be the trend of increasing in permits, that we don't get into that falling behind situation because it's, you know, that's where people start complaining. It sounds like you have great response from the public, so obviously you're turning things around and that's exactly what you want to see, but, you know, there does come a time where it can get overwhelming and you don't want to have that time be late. So, you know, I think this board would appreciate knowing if you get to that point where you feel like the water's coming on the ship.
Absolutely, and we do have much better tracking systems these days, so we are keeping a close eye on that. So, thank you.
And thank you for your great work and all your staff's work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's move on to item number five, Public Works Director Jim Porter.
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure to present the department's presentation today as well as cap project, so I'll hit on both items as we go along. The Department of Public Works basically is your design, construction, and maintenance arm of the county for public infrastructure. And we do that through four divisions. We have administration and airports. We run two county airports through that group. They also handle all of our contract processing and all of our HR and IT needs. We have the roads division, which maintains 316 miles of county roads. They maintain the entire vehicle fleet for the county as well as all of our heavy equipment and pumping facilities. And we handle traffic engineering out of that group as well. Then we have facilities. We are the people that bring you light, power, and heat. PG&E helps out a little bit, but we make sure it gets here. And we do construction within those facilities and try to provide overall maintenance in some of our aging infrastructure. That group also has capital projects embedded within it. I will talk about capital projects later. That group does most of the construction work within the facilities and some general construction projects that we do that aren't necessarily facilities-oriented. Then we have engineering and resource protection. They do the general engineering or general civil engineering, design and construction-type work, so roads, bridges, flood control, that sort of thing. We also have a utility group there that manages 10 separate independent sanitary sewer districts, two potable water districts, and three flood control districts. We're also working through Supervisor Pine's leadership to do some enhanced flood control work within the county that operates outside of that division. So, it's pretty exciting things that we've been doing in the past two years and will be doing in the next two years. This is a photo of the Crystal Springs Dam Bridge that's being constructed right now. That was when the false work was about half-constructed for the main span in the middle portion of the bridge. Since this time, there's been a deck pore up there and that project is moving along fairly swimmingly. We expect completion of that project in October of 2017. The bridge itself won't be open until March of 18, though, because you'll see in that photograph, there's PG&E high-tension lines there. Those are 230 KV lines that run all the way up to San Francisco and as part of this project, we will be taking those lines down and actually hanging them off the edge of the bridge. So, that'll essentially open up the view corridor through that area, which is a benefit to all those living in that area. So, towards our performance measures, Public Works lies mainly in the environmentally-conscious community segment of Vision 2025 for the county. So, we tend to focus on energy conservation-type work and ways that we can more efficiently provide services, but also in doing that, cut down on our greenhouse gas effects. And this shows a trend for our electrical usage. You can see a downward decline, but we kind of flattened out the past couple of years and that's been for a couple of reasons. We have a 900-kilowatt solar system that is being installed at the San Mateo Medical Center. The contractor on that project went bankrupt, so we had a pause for about five to six months. We've since worked with the bonding company. They have retained another contractor. They've executed their agreements to make that go forward and we should see that project completed within the next two months. Also, we've had some issues with some of our cogeneration facilities at McGuire Jail and up at the medical center, but those are coming online again. And those are essentially big natural gas burning engines that create electricity and we take the waste heat and use that to preheat the boilers. So, it's a more efficient use of energy and as an end result, it cuts down on our greenhouse gases. But, as we get some of these bigger projects online, we'll be seeing further reductions in electricity usage. The pavement condition index is going to be a theme that I'll be talking about today. As you're aware, funding for transportation in this state and in this country has sort of hit a standstill. The gas tax has not been raised since 1991 and as you can imagine, the buying power of those dollars have gone down. If you combine that with the cost of construction going up, our buying value of those dollars has been severely impacted. The road fund right now is spending more than it's taking in, so we do have a fund balance, but what you'll see is the pavement condition index, which is a rating of our roadway system, begin to decline. We spent a lot of work this past year on our secondary roadway system, so those are mainly the roads out on the coast side. We did a lot of chip seals and other pavement treatments to try to preserve that system, but it did have an impact on our primary roads. We actually saw a drop in our PCI on our primary road. We actually saw a drop in our PCI on our primary roads. So, we are really at this place where we're on the edge of a precipice of our transportation system deteriorating. We're going to do everything we can to hold it together, and we're hoping that as part of the extraordinary session in Sacramento this month, that we'll see some relief for transportation funding. And this will give you an example of what this really means. This is North Street in Pescadero. We completed a roadway reconstruction project there. You can see the cracking on the roadway system. That's a PCI of less than ten. The road has failed. You can't overlay that. You have to rebuild it, and that's what we did. We came in and rebuilt that road. That was about a million dollar project for less than a mile worth of roadway. So, if you can get a sense for, we have three hundred and fifteen miles of roads, there's a huge challenge in front of us. Customer service ratings. We have met our customer service goal of ninety percent. However, we're continually trying to improve that. We're working with our various divisions to, believe it or not, change the survey format to make it easier for people to fill out those surveys. I think folks get survey overload after a while, and we have to make this convenient for folks. The surveys that we do occur both for our external customers, the public, as well as our internal customers. Part of what our department does is supply services to departments, so we want to make sure that we reach out to our department partners and get their feedback as well, so that's always something that we're paying keen attention to. In terms of our percent of employees rating their experience here as working good or better, we saw a slight decline in that. We're beating the county average, but we saw a slight decline. So, we started drilling into the information that we have gained through the employee engagement surveys, and we found that there was a little bit of a disconnect between what our employees are actually doing in their jobs and their knowledge of what the overall mission of the department is and what is happening in other divisions. So, as you can imagine, with four divisions, people get kind of siloed. The folks in facilities don't know what the roads folks are doing, and the folks at the airports really don't know what the facilities people are doing. So, we did two things. We have created a newsletter, a monthly newsletter that goes out to the department, and I should say, monthly is kind of a stretch. It's bi-monthly at times, but we're trying to make sure that the employees really get a sense for what overall the department is doing. The second thing we're doing is what we're calling the road show. So, I'm going out to every single location that we're in, and we have several locations throughout the county, and providing a presentation similar to what you're seeing without a lot of the performance measures, but giving the staff an overview of the types of work that we're doing all over the county and getting input from them as to, you know, what they would like to see to make their experience here at the county better. So, all the work that we're doing to engage our employees is actually, you know, paying off in Public Works and the rest of the departments of the counties. That's a, that's a major compliment to the vision of your board, and also the work that HR is doing to give us friendly reminders to get this work done. Percent of employee evaluations completed annually. You saw a great spike there. We had been at around twenty percent or less for evaluations. If you look at the, the kind of range of employees we have, many of our employees are long-term employees, and the terrible truth of this is that after people reach their five years, they tend not to get evaluated. But, again, employee engagement. Part of what we need to do is to provide feedback to our employees on a regular basis, and one of the emphases that we had this year, emphasize, yeah, anyway, was to do this, and by golly, we did a pretty good job. Now, it hits sixty-nine percent. We can do better, but that's certainly quite a leap from past years. In terms of highlights, we got quite a bit done last year. This is a photo of the Marata Road emergency repairs. This is out just south of Surfers Beach. Last winter, we had some pretty big swells, and it caused the erosion protection to be actually removed from the slope. That caused erosion, and the reason why this is such a big deal was because there's a sewer main about eight feet inboard from that slope, and if you lose that slope, you lose the sewer main, and then you have raw sewage flowing into the ocean. So, our guys, our men and women in Public Works, within twenty-four hours, were able to secure five thousand tons of rock. They went to Marin County to get it, because nobody could deliver in the heat of the storm, and they placed that rock on Marata Road. It was quite a credit to the crews out there. The Adeline and Canyon Road sewer improvements, that's up in Burlingame Hills, were about halfway done on that project to replace nearly a mile of sewer main up there, so that's working well. We've relocated the fleet facility that was over just on the other side of County Office Building One, where the new Regional Operations Center is going. That function was moved to Grant Yard, although that seems like a minor item, it isn't. We had to move, we had to essentially recreate a vehicle and equipment maintenance facility down at Grant, and we're able to move all our employees up there, as well as relocate some folks up to Tower Road as well. We've also installed ten vehicle charging stations, eight on this campus and two up at the medical center. We were able to obtain Energy Star ratings for five of our buildings. We're going to continue to do that as we move forward. Again, our goal is to reduce our greenhouse gas effect, and in doing that, that allows us to apply for and obtain these ratings. And I did mention that we put quite a bit of emphasis on surface treatments on some of our secondary roads. We did about thirty miles last year. One of the things that we haven't really had a big emphasis on, though, was taking care of roads with a PCI of twenty or less. Those are those failed roads, and the way that pavement management works is you want to put your money into the roads that are in a place where you can resurface them and spend your dollars wisely, but that then leaves out all these roads that have fallen apart. So, what we're trying to do is annually take one to two roads and reconstruct them. So, we're trying to knock down that backlog of really awful roads that we have in some areas. We talked about Crystal Springs Dam. On Middlefield Road, we're in the process of working with the community to come up with a collaborative design on the roadway improvements that we'll be doing on Middlefield. That's the suction from Fifth Avenue up to the north, just about to the Redwood City border. So, we will be undergrounding the utilities there. We're changing the roadway configuration from four lanes to two lanes with left turn lanes, and we're putting in bike lanes. So, it'll be quite a project, widening sidewalks. It'll be a nice job. Enhanced flood control through Supervisor Pine's leadership, as I mentioned, we've retained a position, and we're trying to fill another position, to do work in areas that the county typically doesn't work in. One of the things that we find in the wintertime is when creeks flood, they tend to flood right on borders. Creeks know no jurisdictional boundaries. Belmont Creek's a great example. It starts out in Belmont. It impacts the unincorporated county area in the city of San Carlos, and there really was no mechanism to coordinate those jurisdictions to complete jobs, and it was basically left to the cooperation of the Public Works Directors. What we're trying to do is come in and provide a more regional approach to flood control in areas where we wouldn't normally work. We're starting to gain a lot of expertise in sea level rise and sustainability as it applies to flood control, and begin working with the cities to start to move, to move the ball, as they say. We'd like to get some projects completed that wouldn't otherwise get done in the cities and on the coast side, so that we can address some of the flooding before it becomes a worse problem. We're incorporating low-impact development features in all of our projects, and what those are, those are a result of compliance with the municipal regional permit. When you discharge stormwater from a facility runoff from a road, you need to run that over some sort of treatment mechanism, and that can be infiltrating that water through grassy areas and collecting it and discharging it to the bay, or actually physically filtering out the pollutants. What is tending to rise to the surface is these green infrastructure projects or grassy swales. You'll be seeing more and more of those, so we're working on that. What that does, though, is on every project, it requires us to allocate a certain amount of space for that green infrastructure, and there's a maintenance component, because obviously when we build it, we got to come back and maintain it. So, this, again, primarily impacts the road fund. We have limited dollars that we're now spending on a lot of different things, and that reduces the amount of paving that we can do, because that comes all out of the same budget. And this year, we will be performing our rate analysis on our ten sewer districts. We go through and we do a rate structure on a five-year rolling basis for our sewer districts, and this is the fifth year of our five years of rates. So, we'll be coming to your board likely in the spring or summer with those rate recommendations. In terms of facilities, we've been working to phase out our older building equipment. That has several benefits. It improves our reliability, but it primarily reduces our energy consumption. These large building systems are the real energy hogs for the building facility management and use, and when you change out those big, major building systems, you see a reduction in your energy consumption. Another highlight this year was job order contracting. That's what JOC is. JOC is a method of performing maintenance projects by hiring essentially one contractor with a long list of different line items, and we actually have several JOC contracts going at the same time. But what that does is allows us to essentially bypass the traditional bidding and award process, because we've already done that through the JOC award process, and then we can issue task orders to our contractors to get work done quickly, and that helps us complete more projects in a quicker manner of time. In terms of customer service, we're very much involved in trying to address the noise complaint issues that we're hearing, not only on the peninsula, but in Santa Clara County. You'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. It's a very interesting, technical, and difficult issue to address because of the regional nature of aircraft flight in this county and the fact that the FAA controls airspace and aircraft. So, we're working in ways to operate our airport in a way that minimizes noise impacts to the community while complying with federal law. So, that will, again, be coming to you in the future. And we've also taken a look at our website. Our website was not the best. It was a website designed by engineers for engineers. That sort of left out the public. So, we actually had non-technical people take a look at that website and give us a little bit of advice on what they'd be looking for, and shazam, we're getting actually some congratulations on the quality of our website. So, we're continuing to try to improve that, but we are making strides along those lines. In terms of our goals, we're going to be seeking, we've actually been seeking for the last two years, a programmatic, programmatic permit for maintenance work. And what that really means is every time we go out and clean a ditch, we've got to get a permit. It takes us six to twelve months to get a permit. There's roughly seven regulatory agencies involved. So, in order to streamline that, we're doing something called a programmatic permit, where you get this programmatic permit that allows you to do work for roughly a five-year period. You identify, in general, the work you're going to do, and then you set aside mitigation area for the impacts to the environment that you will create. But what that does is it keeps us from having to apply for a permit every time we go out and try to clear a ditch. It's very difficult to get that permit, but we're working on it, and we hope to get it this year. We've discussed Middlefield Road. We also have a project up on Pescadero, CSA eleven Improvement Project. That's to drill a deeper well for the CSA eleven community, which is basically Pescadero, as well as construct a larger water tank out there. As a follow-up to that project, we're also doing a study of an alternate water source for that community. When CSA eleven was installed in the late eighties, it was acknowledged that that aquifer had a twenty-five-year life. We're getting near the end of that. We were able to drop a pump deeper into the aquifer several years ago when we had an issue with a pump in Pescadero. That bought us some time, but we really need to start planning forward for the water supply for that community. We've talked about enhanced flood control. This year, we're basically trying to prepare work plans and get this program established. Next year, we'll be taking those work plans and applying for grant funds to get some of the environmental work, the design done, and start making progress on various projects. We're also planning on purchasing electrical vehicles. I'd mentioned we're putting in vehicle charging stations. We're going to be buying electrical vehicles for the fleet, or at least that's what we're going to propose to you, to buy electrical vehicles for the fleet. One of the challenges with that is the range on affordable electrical vehicles. So, they will be local vehicles. We want to keep them within their eighty-mile range for the types of vehicles that we'll typically be buying, but that will be good for folks that are on this campus or on the medical center campus that have short trips. We have a goal of reducing energy consumption by twenty percent and water consumption by ten percent. Next year, we will have our airport policy work completed. We're updating our policies, procedures, and standards for the airport, as well as our lease agreements and contracts with our partners at the airport. That work will be done. And we're also implementing a new program to start inspecting work that's done by contractors in other facilities. So, we do have occasions when other departments do construction projects, and sometimes the work product is something that we think needs to be improved a bit. So, we're going to work with departments to go out and inspect the work that their contractors are doing to make sure that the end product is acceptable to our facilities folks and to all the people that occupy those buildings. In terms of challenges, we've talked about the road fund. We've talked about regulatory permits. That has been a huge challenge to us. Out in Pescadero, Butino Creek dredging, it took over a year to get permits on that project, to dredge a hundred-foot by eighty-foot section of creek. It's very challenging, and it hurts our project delivery, but as I said, we're working on streamlining the permit process, but that will continue to be an issue as we move forward. CSA seven water system operation is another challenge. The photo on the right is their water tank. It's an old Redwood water tank. There are not a lot of connections up there, and the distribution system, as well as their infrastructure, their water tanks, the treatment facilities, are in need of replacement. So, we'll continue to work with the community on that. We have received funding through the CAP program to do some absolutely necessary work, so we'll be working on that, but that is a system, along with several other of these small districts that we work with, that have very few connections and large capital needs. So, we're trying to develop rate structures that cover those costs, but in some cases, it's very challenging. Enhanced flood control partnerships, we're working with the cities, and I'd like to say that we've gotten very positive feedback from those that we've talked to. We've met with South San Francisco, San Bruno, Belmont, San Carlos, San Mateo, Redwood City, Menlo Park. All the staff we've met with are very much in favor of the work that we're proposing to them, so we're very hopeful that that's going to show some measurable progress in the next year. We will be buying electric vehicles, as I mentioned, subject to your approval. The other challenge that we're facing is energy use. So, as you can imagine, it's very, it varies quite a bit based on the demands on the buildings and the temperature. So, if you've got a really cold winter, your heating prices are going to go up, and if you have a hot summer, your AC prices go up. So, we're trying to reduce our energy consumption, but there are certain variables that are out of our control, and we just wanted to point out that that's something that we are aware of and wanted you to be aware of as well. And we're also working with our partners to reduce aircraft disturbances emanating primarily from the San Carlos Airport, but in addition, we operate a airport in Halfing Bay, and we do get questions out there. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'd like to thank your board for all your support over the years, County Manager's Office and particularly County Council, thank you very much, and the men and women of Public Works. I've been doing this for a few years now, and I have to say, the staff we have are some of the best professionals there are in this state. I'd like to thank my deputy directors, Rachelle Kiner, who's with us here, Doug Konig, he's in charge of facilities, Joe LaCoco is roads, and Ann Stillman is engineering and resource protection. But I'm blessed to have a great staff, and I think this county is blessed to have professionals that do such a good job, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Thorough report. Supervisor Pine.
Thank you, Jim.
Supervisor Tissia.
Just a quick question. Jim, when you're talking about flood control, I know you're talking about a lot of these channels and things like that. Has there been any further work in Broadmoor with the flooding there on Eighty-Eighth, Eighty-Ninth? Any plans for the future?
So, there is plans to the future. There hasn't been a lot of movement there. We've been meeting with the city of Daly City on their Vista Grande project. That is going to take some time. I think the real solution is working with the school district to try to get some sort of retention basins in the schools' fields that are near Park Plaza Drive, to be able to take that peak flow so that it doesn't flood Eighty-Eighth and Eighty-Ninth Street. We will be, as part of our enhanced flood control work, reaching out to the school districts to see if we can get some cooperation in constructing those fields and trying to relieve that flooding in Broadmoor.
That's the piece I was talking about. I know the other one's millions and millions of dollars of Vistagram. That's a whole different animal, but this piece that could be an interim solution, so you are moving forward or going to be moving that forward as well?
Yes, we will. That's definitely in the work plan.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Porter?
I'll just add my thanks to your road crews. They come out during really inclement weather, and they do a really phenomenal job, so besides you have a great staff, but those men and women on your road crews do a fabulous job on the coast side. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item number six. Now we'll move on to item number six, Capital Projects Director Porter.
Thank you, President Slocum. I'll just roll right into this. All right. So the Capital Projects Unit designs, constructs, plans, big buildings. They do big projects. This group also does some of the smaller, what we call the FICUS projects, the Facility Condition Index projects. But primarily, this is the group that you will see that does the larger type of work. The drawing before you is an artist's impression of what the new Regional Operations Center will likely look like. That's the building that's going to be right next to County Office Building 1. As you can see, the old vehicle maintenance facility, well, you can't see it there because it's gone. The old vehicle maintenance facility was demolished last week. If you could see it, it wouldn't be there. But that project is proceeding. I know McCarthy Builders is working with planning and building to execute their permits. They're working on the foundation design, so that project is moving forward. In terms of performance measures, percent of projects on target to be completed within budget and schedule. We are meeting our timeline there. I'd like to mention that there are a lot of projects that this board doesn't see. We literally do hundreds of construction projects every year. The ones that typically get the visibility are the large projects, the Regional Operations Center, Cordillares, the Medical Center. We are meeting our goals of delivering projects within budget and schedule. There has been some challenges on these larger projects. I'll talk to you a bit about that later. It's kind of a mouthful, but what this measure tells you is the number of projects that we're starting and completing within a budget cycle. As you can see from the prior years, we weren't doing a very good job of having projects that are budgeted get started within the year it's funded and getting it completed within two years. Right around 1314 is when we started job order contracting. And as you can see, it's had a measurable impact on our delivery of projects. So that's definitely a good outcome, even though it looks kind of strange below the red line. In terms of capital projects expenditures, you've seen a constant rise. We did have a bit of a dip this fiscal year. That's primarily due to some of the larger projects running into budgetary constraints, given our construction environment that we're in today. But we're working through that as we move forward. Terms of highlights, we're working on the Skylanda Fire Station project. That's an artist rendition of that project. They're right now coming out of the ground on that project, and we're scheduled to be done by next May, subject to the winter not impacting their construction schedule too much. Middlefield Road Recycling Center demolition was completed. That's that area behind the Fair Oaks Clinic. The Public Safety Dispatch Operations Center is moving forward. That's The Rock. We are completing master plans. We've got master planning going on at the Redwood City Campus, the San Mateo Medical Center Campus, the Tower Road Campus, and we're actually doing some programming up in South San Francisco for a new North County Health System Facility that will serve the public up in the North County. Pescadero Fire Station, we're working on site selection with Planning and Building Department and Supervisor Horsley's office. I think we're narrowing down the locations, so that project will move forward once we get across, jump past a couple of zoning hurdles to allow us to build that station. And finally, we're hoping by the end of this fiscal year to be in the design phase on a new county center parking garage and a new animal shelter out at Coyote Point. Next year, we would definitely like to have the Regional Operations Center done. That is going to be done next year, definitely. Skylanda Fire Station will be done. County Parking Garage, that is a project that is definitely needed on this campus, particularly if we develop a new County Office Building 3. So that work should be completed next year. The animal shelter should be done, as well as the Maple Street Homeless Shelter. On the Maple Street Homeless Shelter, and one of the things that is happening more and more with our capital projects, is that the superheated construction environment is causing our bid prices to come in exponentially higher than any of our architects or estimators ever imagined. They're coming in 30 to 100% higher. That project had a $5 million estimate on it. The low bid came in at 8.8 million. So we'll be working with our department partners to value engineer that project. We will likely come back to your board for a bit of additional funding, but that's the environment that we're in right now, in this county and in the Bay Area. So these are the challenges that we'll be facing in the upcoming year. The construction climate in the Bay Area is like we've never seen before. There is a lot of building going on in the southern part of the Bay Area, as well as San Francisco. And what's gone on is there is a shortage of subcontractors, and that's causing bid prices to go up because they're having to pay their crews a lot of money, not just in salary, but per diem and housing, because they're actually drawing people from out of California to construct these projects. So we're seeing construction prices going through the roof. We're not hoping for a recession, but we're hoping things cool down so that we can get favorable prices on these projects. On major capital projects, scope control can be an issue. We meet with departments and we provide a service to incorporate all of the needs of the department. Sometimes when we get in these situations where we have to make budget cuts on projects, we need to work with departments to kind of control their scope and reduce some of the features that we have in buildings. So that's going to be an issue if this construction climate keeps up. And I mentioned regulatory permitting. That applies to every single aspect of Public Works that we're involved in. Major CAP is no different. In terms of Measure A, we have several projects that are funded through Measure A. One is the Respite Center, which is what used to be the receiving home on 37th and Hacienda in San Mateo. The Public Dispatch Emergency Operations Center, The Rock. We did relocate the vehicle maintenance. I don't need to read these. You can read them. But these are projects funded through Measure A. In terms of newer Measure A, I'd mentioned the CSA 11 work, so that's work that we'll be doing this year. We're actually in plans and specs on that project. Getting back to regulatory climate, we are not allowed to disturb ground between November 1 and March 31 on that project. So we are waiting until February to bid the project so that we'll start construction during the summer period. That completes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Questions? We'll start with Supervisor Horsley.
Well, you turned your microphone on, sorry. Looking at the picture of the new Public Safety Dispatch Center, do those, they keep the deflectors on that front of that building? Are they gone?
Are you referring to the fins on the edge of the building?
Yeah, right. Are they still on it?
I will have to report back to you on that one. They were, the reason for the fins is really a solar enhancement. So believe it or not, as the sun shines, those fins provide the UV rays from going in the building, and it keeps your heating costs down. So it is, it's also an architectural feature, and that's being evaluated as part of our scoping of that project and affordability. So we'll look at that.
It just looked like it had been removed, so I'm just curious about that. The other thing is, there is a, as I recall this, isn't there a project, or maybe I missed it, on Marotta Road? I mean, I know it's a long-term, it's going to take a couple of years just to look at the permitting and planning.
Right. So we've actually got two projects on Marotta Road. I believe the one that you're referring to is the, essentially the sheep pile, sheep pile wall or cutoff wall on Marotta Road. That project was just given to engineering, so they're working on staffing that, getting the environmental started on that project. The other project that we're doing there is, I showed you the emergency repair that we did as part of the DPW show. That was truly a temporary repair. We're coming in next summer. I don't think we're going to get in there this winter, but we're going to pull those rocks back, and we're going to build a shotcrete wall against that dirt slope to hold the soil together, and then we'll put the rocks back. And then the sheep pile wall starts from where those rocks end and go all the way to the north. So we do have quite a bit of work scheduled for Marotta Road.
I guess the last question is, do you really, you know, you have a lot of projects, and they are really very complicated. And I guess the issue for me is also, do you actually have the staff that you actually need to be able to accomplish most of those goals?
At this point, we do have adequate staff, certainly on the building side of the house. Right now, we're evaluating the engineering side of the house, the civil-type work. I think part of the challenges in delivering projects right at this point are really more the costs. We go out with a project, we get bids, or we get proposals that are hugely in excess of our budget, and then we have to re-engineer these projects. So that's what's really affecting our project delivery. But when we come to you for the budget next fiscal year, we will be looking at our staffing as part of that exercise that we do with our staff. So at that point, I'd be better able to report back on our staffing size at that time.
Last question has to do with Maple Street. I understand the bids came in considerably higher than we estimated. It's like $500 a square foot versus a 300.
It's quite a bit higher than that, yeah.
Even more than that? Ooh. Are we just going to rethink it, or?
Well, we've got a meeting scheduled with HSA and the service provider in the next couple of weeks to talk about ways to move forward. For the bid price that we got, it would have been cheaper just to knock everything down and build a brand-new building. I mean, that's how high those prices were. So we're going to look at value engineering that project. We're going to look at what it would cost to do new construction. I think that's what we need to look at and see what's going to be the most valuable end product at the most affordable price. So first, we'll meet with the user groups, and then, once we get to a place where we've decided on what that modified scope of work is, we'll likely return to your board with some combination of scope reduction and budget increase. I don't think there's any way to cut nearly $4 million out of that project.
Through the president to Supervisor Horsley, the other opportunity, at least, that this gives us is not only to take a look at the project in building a new facility, but probably building or utilizing the site maybe in a different way, in addition to the traditional type of shelter beds, maybe looking at small houses, maybe looking at RV, all sorts of possibilities. I think it gives us the opportunity to go back and rethink the site, so there's a silver lining in this, but the costs were just hugely in excess of what we thought they would be.
Supervisor Tissia.
I told you I didn't have a question. It just struck me when you were talking about the Maple Street facility. Are you also looking at the jail, that whole piece, or just where the Maple Street facility is?
Just Maple Street.
Oh, okay.
Just as an add, though, we are looking to demolish the old women's jail so that we, it's, County Manager Malpe is correct, we're just looking at that site, but as part of that project, we're going to take the old women's jail out. So that provides greater opportunity, as Mr. Malpe said, to really have a blank canvas on what we want to do on that property.
I guess that's what I was trying to get to, is will there be that property available as well? Nice, okay.
All right. Supervisor Pine.
Thanks for your report, Jim. I have two questions for you. When the ROC was presented to us at a board meeting quite some time ago, we talked a little bit about, you know, the fact that this area is in a flood zone, a 100-year flood zone. And could you inform me about how you've incorporated flooding into the design in this project?
Certainly. As part of building code compliance, you're required to have the finished floor elevation about one foot above the 100-year tidal flood mapped, the map tidal flood from FEMA. That building does comply with that one foot above the mapped 100-year tidal flooding criteria. In terms of sea level rise, we've had various estimates of what that might be. That wasn't incorporated by bringing up the building. What we're looking at there is more of a concrete wall around the building. But part of that compliance also is waiting to see what Redwood City is going to do in terms of protecting their levee system. As I mentioned, some of the value engineering that occurs as we look at projects does have us look at things like adapting to sea level rise. And when we get in a tight budget situation, raising the pad is one of the areas that may not get incorporated in the project due to financial issues.
Okay, but it sounds like, at least for the 100-year flood, I mean, the last thing we want is our ROC not to be operating, right? And then a different question is, you know, legislation's been passed recently, and the governor's really been pushing on making sure buildings are more energy efficient and to deal with climate change. Could you update us about, you know, how you're thinking about these buildings in terms of some of the new requirements that are coming online? I mean, I guess the new Title 24 is, at some point, is going to apply to buildings such as these.
Certainly. The county has an ordinance that says that any new construction of greater than, I believe it's 3,000 square feet, requires that that new building be LEED certified. It doesn't specify what that LEED certification is, but all of our buildings that we're building now are LEED certified. Then the question becomes, is it platinum certified? Is it gold, silver, et cetera? Again, that's very much budget-driven. We tell our architects that we would like to receive as many LEED points as possible, but we have to have that LEED certification. So what we try to do is provide a LEED certified building that provides the elements that actually do the most in reducing energy. So I guess the long answer to that question is, we're complying with LEED certification at varying levels, depending upon the budget that we have for that project.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And last, but not least, Office of Sustainability Director Egomire.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, Supervisors, Mr. Malpe, and Mr. Byers. Thank you for your time this afternoon. It is a pleasure to be here and to share with you our past year's performance and highlight a few of the key accomplishments and efforts the office has had over the past year. Just so you know, I found a typo in one of the slides yesterday, and so this slide deck represents kind of the corrected typo in that instance. There was just one. Let me start with our new logo and tagline, "Solving for Tomorrow." This captures our approach to all of our work, designing and implementing programs today that solve for the needs of tomorrow. Next, our mission statement. The Office of Sustainability helps the county of San Mateo and its communities adapt to our changing environment by providing services and resources that inspire new ideas and solutions. We are committed to building a community that fulfills the needs of everyone today and into the future. In December 2015, our team came together and we moved into our new offices. And with that coming together, we initiated our strategic planning efforts to focus on our priorities and how to communicate effectively with our stakeholders. In turn, these efforts led to our messaging framework, which includes our logo and branding, tagline, and mission statement. We are currently putting the finishing touches on our strategic plan for the office, including performance measures for all our program areas. And we have basically four key program areas in our office. These include the Waste Reduction Group, Livable Communities, Energy and Water, and Climate Change and Adaptation. Across these four program areas, collaboration and engagement play a key role in our outreach with each other, our teams, county departments, cities, special interest groups, and the I have three headline performance measures to share with you this morning, or this afternoon. First, greenhouse gas emissions for the unincorporated county. Overall, we've been successful in reducing greenhouse gas emissions for the unincorporated county. I'd like to start with the blue-dash line. This represents the 2005 baseline that all reductions are compared against. The second line I'd like to draw your attention to is the horizontal-red dash line. This is the 2020 target, which is 17% below the 2000 base year emission. As you can see, we have met and exceeded the 2020 target in both 2012 and 2013, the most current years for which emissions data is available for us. Although we are pleased with our progress, I'd like to note that some of the gains we see here resulted from the recession and reduced economic activity. We expect to see some emission increases associated with economic recovery, which we plan to evaluate before proposing any changes to our emission targets. This graph indicates both the residential and commercial garbage disposal, both the dark and light orange respectively, in pounds per person per day. The dark orange horizontal line indicates the residential target. line indicates the residential target, and the light orange horizontal line indicates the commercial target. Both of these targets are calculated by the state and provided to us. As you can see, we have successfully come in below both targets for 2015 and 16, or fiscal year 2015-16. Because our office is newly formed, we only have last year's information to report here on the percent of employees rating their experience work for San Mateo County as good or better. The green horizontal line is the county-wide overall of 79.2%. The blue horizontal line is the target of 75, and our office result last year was 80.3. So here are a few highlights from each of our program areas I'd like to share with you. First, in the Waste Reduction area, the Hack SMC event this year, a mother-daughter team took first prize for their app and software program that will help bring our surplus property efforts into the 21st century with a virtual method to avoid new purchases when items in good condition are available for reuse. Next, in the Livables Community Program, we launched our SMC commuter bus for county employees. There are three different routes, North County, East Bay, and South Bay, coming to the Government Center here in Redwood City and Health Center in San Mateo. Also, the Home for All Initiative, which began as the Jobs Housing Task Force has now launched. And then, this has been an incredible journey for so many people, and we're very pleased to be a part of that effort. In the Energy and Water Program, staff is responsible for the San Mateo County Energy Watch Program. This program provides services to CCEG, who in turn partners with PG&E for a number of energy efficiency programs and climate planning here in San Mateo County. In 2015, our staff doubled the energy efficiency savings goal established by PG&E for us. Also, we are pleased to be recognized by the Institute for Local Governments through their Beacon Program for the second year. Last year, San Mateo County was the first county in the state to receive a full Beacon Award. This year, we're being recognized for a Spotlight Award for our sustainability best practices. And last, in the Climate Change and Adaptation Peninsula Clean Energy, we're happy that we launched very recently, and what an accomplishment by so many people involved here. The first phase of 77,000 customers started receiving cleaner energy last month all across the county. The first phase included small businesses, cities, the county, and 20% of all the residents in San Mateo County, and only 1% opt-out rate so far. Very pleased about that. Phase 2 Customers, which will be over 250,000 customers, will start receiving cleaner energy in April And last, Sea Change SMC, a joint effort between the county and the State Coastal Conservancy. We are very close to publishing our draft vulnerability assessment Phase 1 study. This has been an effort by many staff, our local jurisdictions, and interested parties to identify vulnerable assets in the county and provide guidance for adaptation, and the next steps we need to take to improve community resilience for our changing climate. The next few slides outline our challenges and priorities. First, let's start with funding and communication. Sources of revenue will continue to be a focus for us as we seek opportunities and funding sources to further our mission. Another challenge is communication. We'll be expanding our outreach and engagement efforts in a number of programs in our office. The important foundation to all this is collaboration, working with our existing partners and building new partnerships and connections. Staff development and engagement will also play an important role in our office through our leadership team to address the needs of our staff and their professional and development training. And we also find addressing illegal dumping continues to be one of the challenges we are involved in. Engagement is our priority, and we are focusing on improving our processes and collaboration with county departments and other community stakeholders to make our place, our community, a better place to live and work. Next up, our commuter bus program. We'll be honest here, there have been a few bumps in the road as we've learned an entirely new program delivery. But we've been working very hard every day to make improvements to the system and making it work for our employees. Some of the initial feedback we've received from riders has been incredibly positive. Also, active transportation is so very important to all of us, for our health and for our environment. Both of these challenges play an important role in our transportation integration priority as we continue to find solutions to meet tomorrow's transportation needs. Water, water, water everywhere, sea level rise, green infrastructure, and stormwater. We need to address and adapt to it. We need to build green infrastructure systems, and we need to make sure our water quality does not diminish. Most importantly, we need to look at our approach to these challenges in an integrated and holistic way. And last, housing congestion, challenges we are all faced with here in San Mateo County. We're pleased to be, to help and be a part of the Home for All Initiative. Looking at our Measure A efforts, we have a number of projects we're currently working on that are funded through Measure A. These include our San Mateo Plain Sub Basin Groundwater Assessment, our RCD support, the Youth Exploring Sea Level Rise Program, Middlefield Road Street Escape Improvements, and finally, funding our Active Transportation Coordinator. Once again, thank you Supervisors for your time this afternoon. In closing, I'd like to acknowledge the insight and guidance of Ms. Jensen that she provides our office, Mr. Malpe for supporting our ideas and budget requests, and thank you all to the management team and the staff in the Office of Sustainability. Because of you, your passion for what you do, for solving for tomorrow, you make San Mateo County and our cities a better community to work, play, and live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egomire. Questions? Supervisor Tissia.
Just a quick question on the commuter bus. Do you have numbers so far of how many people are riding it, and also data from the different areas?
Yes, we do. We've been tracking that on a consistent basis, and I don't have the numbers, but I'd be happy afterwards being able to provide all the supervisors with an update on the numbers so far.
Okay, great. That'd be great.
Thank you. Was that it? Supervisor Pine?
Jim, it's been really exciting to watch your office grow and the energy that is encompassed there. And as I've said on many occasions, your team and your own contribution in launching PCE was phenomenal, and very grateful for that, and for the support on Sea Level Rise and the other initiatives in your office. But it's a really exciting and energetic part of our county, and you've shown great leadership in making that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Egomire.
Thank you.
Good report. Okay, moving on. Item number four, Agricultural Waits and Measures. Introduction of an Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Chapter 5144 of Title V of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code relating to fees for inspection and permitting of point-of-sale systems and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety.
Good morning again, Supervisors. I'm Fred Crowder, the County Agricultural Commissioner, and in this case, sealer of Waits and Measures. I'm sorry?
Where's your hat?
Oh, yeah, I need the Waits and Measures hat, don't I? But anyway, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. This item is to repeal and replace County Code Section 5144 of the County Ordinance Code, which concerns the registration, certification, and fee for point-of-sale systems. Those are scanners in short terms. So anyway, our staff checks the scanners annually to ensure that customers are not being overcharged, that the price charged is not more than the advertised shelf price, and we also follow up on consumer complaints on these. So if it pleases the Board, I can provide a more in-depth overview, or I can answer any questions you might have.
Question. I'm gonna make a motion to pass a resolution amending the fee schedule for the Agricultural Commissioner.
It's an introduction. Yes?
Introduction of an Ordinance.
Oh.
It's just an action to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item five, Information Services, which is a resolution authorizing the hiring of retired Financial Services Manager, Mr. Walton.
Good afternoon, Board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers, John Walton, Director of Information Technology. We're asking for your approval to hire as extra help a retiree, Ms. Candy Clarno, who was our Budget Manager for many, many years in the department. Ms. Clarno had to retire due to personal circumstances, and we have a very small financial team in our department. Our new administrative director is in the process right now of hiring a new Financial Services Manager to construct our budget for the coming budget year. Unfortunately, because we weren't able to hire someone before she retired, we need her to be available as we construct the new budget. Our budget rates are due out to the departments in the January, February timeframe, and it's important that we do it correctly, as those costs will flow down to the departments for the next two years. So we're asking for your permission to bring her back in a limited capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Thank you. Any questions on Mr. Walton?
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the hiring of Retired Financial Services Manager to Candy Clarno as extra help in order to provide urgent assistance in financial planning.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Attorney Manager Malpe.
Mr. President, members of the Board, this item would provide $50,000 in Measure A funds from President Slocum's Measure A budget to the Girls and Boys Club of the Peninsula, the East Palo Alto Clubhouse for kitchen upgrades.
Thank you. In the interest of time...
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the pressure's on, Mr. Malpe. Number eight.
The only thing I would...
I mean, seven, I'm sorry.
The only thing I would highlight in my report is, the Board will, I'm sure, want to download the new Mosquito Alert app. That will be part of the event coming up in November. I'll be checking each of the individual phones to make sure you have it.
Be sure to do that.
That's nice, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Board Member Reports. Supervisor Groom?
I will pass.
Supervisor Horstley.
I just have one adjourned memory of John Litten. He was an owner, actually, the owner's representative for a section of the Tunis Creek Beach, and he was, his father was a legendary outdoorsman and environmental, as well as an environmental activist. And he was working with us on solving some of the really thorny issues that Tunis Creek Beach, he just passed away pretty suddenly.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
A couple of things. I had a terrific trip to Amsterdam and Rotterdam to learn more about flooding, sea level rise, and sustainability, so can share more of that offline. I also just wanted to remind everyone that I've been working really hard on the Select Committee on South Bay Arrivals, dealing with airline noise coming into SFO. Concurrently, the Round Table has been working on departures. As I believe everyone is aware, you know, FAA has changed the airspace in a very material way, introducing this new next-gen technology. It's a very, very difficult process. As has been pointed out, the FAA controls the airspace, so we have three major airports. It's a spaghetti bowl of flight patterns. But that work will be concluding. I'll make sure everyone gets the reports from these two bodies that have been working in a very constructive way with the FAA. The FAA is very engaged in both forms to make recommendations for trying to improve on the situation. But the challenge is, is that airline traffic is increasing, and the airspace is among the most congested in the country. But we will have recommendations, and the FAA, again, has been engaged in a way that I've never seen in my tenure here on the Round Table. So that's been a ray of hope.
Thank you. We look forward to a PowerPoint presentation on your trip.
Okay.
All right. Supervisor Tissia.
Yes, I want to adjourn in memory of Alice Peña Bullos. She was a great community leader in the Filipino community. She was born in 1930 in the Philippines, and she completed her Master's Program in Social and Behavioral Sciences at the University of Santo Thomas in Manila, where she later chaired the Department of Sociology. She married Galardo Bullos in 1967, and in 1970 began dividing her time between Manila and San Francisco as she was conducting research on the social adjustment and integration of Filipino immigrants in America. In 1972, she permanently moved to the United States with her husband and daughter. She was a leader in the movement to educate and empower the Filipino community. She was, her husband was a lawyer, and they, together, they organized the Phil-America Grassroots Movement to involve Filipinos in the political process and as active participants in the broader community. As many of you know, she's been involved in many, many areas of the community, the Bayanan Community Center, was a founder and former President Tomassinian's, and the list goes on and on. But she was quite powerful in the Filipino community and was a great mentor to many of the Filipino individuals who had hoped and did run for political office. She was also the Regional Chairman on the Asian Pacific Affairs for the former 11th Congressional District with U.S. Congressman Tom Lantos. In 1995, she was appointed to join former President Bill Clinton's White House Conference on Aging. She was also named Woman Warrior of the Year by the Pacific Asian American Women Bay Area Coalition. And our sympathy goes out to her family, and I know there was a large service for her yesterday, and she will be sorely missed. She's a big part of our community. And I have just one announcement. Our last, final Age Well Drive Smart Seminar will be Thursday, November 10. This is your last chance this year, everyone, at Belmont, Twin Pines Lodge, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30. And next year, you'll see Supervisor Slocum making these announcements.
And I am thrilled. Thank you for the opportunity. Let me just briefly say that our San Mateo County Veterans Commission is putting on a luncheon to honor veterans in the county. Pleased to say, the event is sold out. People continue to want tickets. There are no more tickets. It's sold out, as I said. And I just want to mention our honorees this year. Veteran of the Year, Judge John Kranzert for his Veterans Treatment Court, and Tim Healy. Patriot of the Year Award goes to Carolyn Livingston. And Enterprise of the Year is Peninsula Covenant Church's Revival Program. Half the attendees for this lunch are veterans. I know some of you are gonna join us. And eight sponsors, many of whom donated back their tables and tickets so that veterans could attend. Pretty amazing for year one of this luncheon recognizing veterans. So with that, I think we move to closed session, and then we'll report back.
We will move to closed session, and given the nature of the three items before the Board in closed session today, I don't see any need to report back. They're all direction-only items.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.